Good morning, everybody. Nice sunny springtime, summertime weather. The first item of business, new councillor business? Anybody? Jim?
I have new business if there's no councillor's business.
All right.
I'm hoping that council will be able to accommodate a special meeting. Next week, we're proposing Tuesday, July 7th. We have some tenders we need to award, the art gallery, back truck, water main extension.
Okay.
We'll have the reports ready by, in time for a meeting on the 7th, if council is available.
Thank you. Okay.
What time would that be, Jim?
We would normally do it in the morning if there was a reason why that wouldn't work for you.
We'll get, we'll send a loophole to everybody and then hopefully we can get a majority.
I can be there on the 7th. But I have a function, is it 2 o'clock? That's...
Yeah.
For all three, we have bids within the budget, so that's more helpful thing than if we didn't.
It'll probably only be an hour or two maybe at the most.
It could be later in the morning rather than early because I'll have to travel down here from Beaton.
Okay. We'll, we'll send a note out and try and get a time that works for majority. Thank you. Thanks, Jim. Anything further? Minutes, minutes 3.1, minutes for a regular council meeting of June 15th, 2015 for adoption. Moved councillor Schuman seconded councillor Javecov. Any errors or omissions, councillor Parslow?
Yeah, I just draw your attention to item 2.3 of the minutes. This, this doesn't make sense. The, if, let me just read the whole thing. Councillor Parslow discussed attending the Federation of Canadian Municipalities Conference stating that it is a well-organized conference. Express appreciation for the excellent hosting skills. That's fine. Councillor Parslow enjoyed the presentation on asset management. He also attended a Future of First Nations workshop. And the comments of the Commissioner Mary Wilson were appreciated. There are some recommendations from her study that municipalities need to look at such as the... Now, this is where, that should be a period, needs to look at. The other comment then, such as the number one desire expectation of Canadians is quality of life. That was a separate thing. That was at the very end. Remember that CBC guy who does all the polls? He, that's, that's a separate. I, I just made a note that one of the things that stood out for me was the comments of that person about their surveys of what Canadians want. And right across Canada, number one thing, quality of life, followed by second, a productive economy. So, her comments were not related to the number one. So, the, the recommendations, I think if I would make a suggestion with the sentence, there are some recommendations from a study that municipalities need to look at. Should end with a period, okay? And then I don't know how we integrate the next statement, so possibly, it's not that important. Let's just delete the rest of the sentence.
Okay.
And then the rest is fine.
Thank you for that. So, we'll make those corrections for the minutes. Thank you. Any other errors or omissions? Thank you, all in favor? Opposed, carried, thank you. Any business arising out of the minutes? Correspondents, letter 5, 5.1, we have a letter from Donald Ardilian. Request for an additional four-way stop sign at 116th Avenue. I think this is part of, from my perspective anyway, some of the work that we hope to accomplish. We're gonna, I've got the agreement with the Ministry of Transportation and ICBC to do that road safety audit. And so, I think this is a great example of being able to incorporate some of those concerns and put that request out for information to the public when we kick that off later this year. And I don't know, Kevin, if you've got anything further in terms of updates from that, but we can just, if we can just put this as a note into that information as we do that road safety audit. We'll certainly want to request information input from council as well, but it's just, to me, it's just a great example of how we need to try to address some of those issues, so. Councillor Schuman?
So, I would move this for information then.
Thank you. Seconded, councillor McFadden, discussion? All in favor? Opposed, carried, thank you. 5.2, we have a letter from Arlene Delosky requesting use of the Kenbork Aquatics Centre parking lot for her annual SPCA event. Councillor Javecov?
Well, we approve their request.
Thank you. Seconded, councillor Parslow, discussion? Annual event, but Arlene does a ton of work on behalf of the SPCA and for the community. All in favor? Opposed, carried. 5.3, we have a letter from Stefan Pavlos from South East Community Resources Society requesting a donation of 100 swim passes for their annual Take Back the Night event. Councillor Parslow?
I'm not, I'd just like some information from staff.
Sure.
This is, we had this sort of request before, Jim, as where does this fit in with our policies?
So, it's prohibited by your policies.
That's right.
And the alternative would be for them to apply for a grant in similar amount. 100 swim passes, youth passes are $4.52 plus tax. Adult are $6.67 plus tax, so you're looking at, if they're to be free, you're gonna eat the tax as well. So, you're looking at over $500 or over $700 depending on which passes you supply.
So, with that information, because we remember discussing this at previous council meetings, I move that we decline this request.
Thank you. Seconded, councillor Javecov, discussion? All in favor? Opposed, carried. 5.4, we have a letter from Connie Patterson, President of the Oscreek Exhibition Association requesting their special occasional permits for the fall fair. Councillor Schuman?
Can I request from staff, just comments with regards to whether or not this is the usual ask and if there's anything different from previous years that we're looking at?
Your honour, do you want me to read? It is the usual request, your worship. And the reason it is in front of you despite the vacuum of change of policy, so there won't be any more, is because of some of the hours here are outside what you, what can be approved without specific resolution of councils.
Thank you. Councillor Schuman?
So, I move that we approve the special occasion request.
Thank you. Seconded, councillor Javecov, discussion? And the addition this year to Tuesday also adds to the difference from our previous year with Connie's, with the concert that night. Councillor Javecov?
I just have a question about the new system where you apply for these licenses through the internet. Is this a requirement with that new system?
Yep, through your worship, there are certain instances that the applicants need to get council approval. And if it's over, if it's past 10 o'clock at night, if the event goes past 10 o'clock at night, or if it's an outdoor event, there's just different options that they would refer the applicant to get council approval first. And then they'd have to go back and complete the application after that point.
Thank you, Brenda. Anything further? All in favor? Opposed, it's carried, thank you. We're a little ahead of our 9 o'clock delegation time, so I'm gonna move to 7, 7.1 reports. Report number 15-119 from the Director of Community Services regarding the Northern Development Initiative Trust Community Hall and recreational, recreation facilities funding application. Councillor Parslow?
I move that report number 15-119 from the Director of Community Services, read NDIT Community Recreation Facilities Grant be received. Further, the City of Dawson Creek support the application from the Community Services Department for the City of Dawson Creek for a community halls and recreation facilities grant of up to $30,000 from the Arena Ice Plant Replacement Project, for, sorry, for the Arena Ice Plant Replacement Project from the NDIT Northeast Regional Development Account.
Thank you. Seconded, councillor Rogers, discussion? Create the question, all in favor? Opposed, carried, thank you. 7.2, we have report 15-117, request to borrow, borrowing funds through the PRRD Fall Security Issuing. This is a number of borrowings for our projects. Councillor Parslow?
I move that report number 15-117 from the Chief Financial Officer, request to borrow funds through security issuing be received. Further, the council approved borrowing funds of $7,274,482 from the Municipal Finance Authority of BC as part of its 2015 fall borrowing session. As authorized through loan authorization sewer trunk line by law number 4199, 2014. Loan authorization LAS Project 14-01 by law number 4211, 2014. Loan authorization LAS Project 14-02 by law number 4212, 2014. Loan authorization LAS Project 14-03 by law number 4213, 2014. And further, the Peace River Regional District be requested to consent to include the city's borrowing in their 10-year and 20-year security issuing bylaws.
Thank you. Seconded, councillor McFadden, discussion? Councillor Rogers?
What were projects 14-01 to 2 and 3? What was that money being borrowed for?
Okay, that to Shelly, your worship.
Yeah, through your worship, those were local area service projects that were approved by the surrounding neighborhoods. I don't have the exact addresses, but they were 2014 projects for paving. And this is, yeah, and this is the portion of the residents repayment, so people that didn't, didn't pay upfront will be paying their local area service charge over 10 years.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Any further questions? And I guess I want to point out by law 4199, the sewer trunk line. Last year, when we took that project on, it was anticipated it was gonna be an $8 million project based on engineering estimates, come in under, I think it was around 6. And now with the completion of it, the borrowing by law is 7. So, there's a million dollars under what the original estimates for that project were gonna be, so. You know, a great, great outcome for a significant bit of infrastructure for the community. And I'm assuming I have that correct.
Through your worship, yes, you do.
Thanks, Jim.
The other thing that you might want to mention too is when we did the original estimates, the interest rate was estimated at 5% and now it's 3.4. So, depending on what the interest rate is when the regional district goes to MFA for borrowing, we'll get some savings there too on the debt servicing.
Great. Thanks, Shelly. Further questions, further comments? All in favor? Opposed, it's carried, thank you. 7.3, we have report number 15-118 from the Director of Infrastructure, re-fleet fuel switching. I think this was a question that come out of maybe our policy discussions, so.
I believe councillor Javecov has talked.
Yeah.
Do you want to read that motion?
I was gonna get somebody else to read it.
The recommendation is quite short, Paulie.
That report, number 15-118 from the Director of Infrastructure, re-fleet fuel switching be received. Further, that staff be directed to continue to explore with Pacific Northern Gas potential opportunities for fleet servicing with compressed natural gas alongside other potential alternative fuels. For comparison and only active, fuel switching becomes economically feasible.
Thank you. Seconded, councillor Rogers, discussion? Comments? All those in favor? Opposed, it's carried.
That was easy.
Report number 15-112 from the Senior City Planner regarding a development permit, variance permit for 18th Street. Councillor Parslow?
I move that report number 15-112 from the Senior City Planner, redevelopment variance permit number 15-03, to increase the maximum permitted width of single-family residential and multifamily residential driveways from 45% of lot frontage to a maximum of 9 meters. To 100% of lot frontage located at 8100 to 8217, 18th Street be received. Further, staff be directed to proceed with the required 10-day notification period.
Thank you. Seconded, councillor Rogers, discussion? Councillor Parslow?
I'm supporting this because obviously there's a mess there, there's a problem there, and this addresses it.
Further questions, councillor Rogers?
I remember all of this before I got elected and everything, and I was, um, I just look at it and go, why don't we just take it back to the way it was? If, if somebody wants to have concrete covering their whole front yard, that's basically what that is. And basically why we changed the, why we changed the driveway layout and everything to begin with was the snow removal. I just, I, I think that all you have to do is, is say to these people, okay, if you want your driveway going, you know, right across the whole front of your yard, that would be okay. But with the snow removal, if it gets piled up in the corners, we'll give you 7 meters, like the city will clear 7 meters in front of their driveway. Whatever piles up on each end, that would be left up to the owners. So, I just, with, with the, with the driveways, like we're given a variance for this, could we not think about maybe going back and re-looking at our building bylaw for the driveways? And switch it back and just say, hey, I think we made a mistake, so let's just go back to it.
Honestly, for me, we spent a year, over a year with this whole residential development process, trying to guide it, trying to understand the implications of density and parking and access. I think, to me, the whole component around what this is, is it's the last piece of property in that block that is gonna be inconsistent with everything else that's there. And that's why I think from the recommendation from administration is, let's get this one done. But for the future, in terms of how we're gonna see that parking and access and snow removal and all that, is how the whole development, residential development unfolded. And I, for one, am not in favor of going back at this point to look at that one.
Yeah. But I just, I was looking at, I looked at some houses, I've, I know one, one individual house that's on that corner. There were, there were, people were actually parking on the lawn, and I think it's his own single family. And they wanted to make their driveway bigger so they could park their RV in it and get that off the street as well. And they were told, oh, no, you're making your driveway too big. And so, they ended up putting it back the way it was. So, like, I know we've talked about RV parking, and I remember listening to one gentleman saying, when are we gonna get the cars all off of the street? This is just, I just looked at it and thought, well, maybe that's another way of doing it.
Jim?
Through your worship, so council has already directed that a separate report is to come to you on the global parking issues around density, as well as a separate report on the whole idea of boarding houses. And a separate report on business licensing for rental properties. Those pieces of work have been directed by council, but frankly, staff has not been able to get to them yet, so they will come at some time. I'll take note with interest your comment that one of the recommendations better not be that we go back and open everything up again. In terms of snow removal, the report indicates that we're going to separately notice each of these properties subject to the variance, that we're only clearing 9 meters, which is what we are currently doing. And we'll be piling snow up at the, blocking their driveways over 9 meters, and it'll be up to them to find a way of removing them.
Thank you. Further questions, further discussion? Ready for the question, all in favor? Opposed, carried, thank you. 7.5, we have report 15-113 from the Senior City Planner regarding the developments, development variance permit number 1502 for 828-107th Avenue. Councillor Javecov?
I move that report 15-113 from the Senior City Planner, redevelopment variance permit 15-02, located at 828-107th Avenue, requesting the minimum rear setback for that principal building be reduced from 7.5 meters to 2.5 meters be received. Further, that staff be directed to proceed with the required 10-day notification period.
Thank you. Seconded, councillor McFadden, discussion? That's the last one I'm gonna ask you to read.
Good.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed, carried, thank you. 8, 8.1, bylaws, waste collection and disposal regulation bylaw 4265 for consideration and adoption? Councillor, sorry?
You have a delegation wishing to speak directly to that bylaw. Perhaps you want to put this off until you've heard from the delegation.
Thank you. So, we'll go to 9, Mayor's Business, and 9.1, we've included a memo from the Director of Corporate Administration regarding a request for a letter of support from the Dawson Creek Golf and Country Club. Now, last week or the week before, I can't remember what day it was, so as we were nearing the deadline for the application period for the Canada 150 grants, we had, council had discussed at the last meeting and approved the letter of request, a letter of support from the curling club. And so, we got a second request from the golf and country club. Councillor Wilber had spoken to the issue at council and indicated, felt we should support these. When I got the request to come in to City Hall, obviously, I'm aware of your guys' wish to not do these things by email poll or telephone poll. But at the same time, you're trying to respond to the wishes on the desires of the community and the volunteer groups, and so that's, I put it out on that basis. So, I wanted to bring it back to you guys because I did get some feedback that from a couple of councillors were concerned about the process of how it unfolded. And for you guys, I just wanted to kind of give how and why it unfolded. And if there are concerns with that, then I'm happy to, and I think we should discuss it at this. So, I felt it was appropriate we bring it back under today's business. Councillor Parslow?
The, my, my understanding was that it required the unanimous vote of all council, not the unanimous vote of those who had the opportunity to participate. One of the reasons was also that sometimes one can be influenced, I hope we can always be influenced by what others say and their reasons.
Sure.
I had some questions about this, but I'm not comfortable in talking about it in open because I think it involves some, I need to seek some understanding about the advice of our MP over applications for federal funding that might compete with city applications and how we should deal with them. So, I, I was reluctantly said to, Brenda, yeah, go ahead because I don't, but I have some concerns about the whole process when we as a city have applied for something and advice that we may have had from the, from the MP. So, I'd like to discuss that at another venue.
Okay. So, absolutely, and in fact, the, you know, when we had applied for the Build Canada Fund and, and had the request from the South East Grain Cleaning Co-op in terms of wanting a letter of support, and council granted that. And then through Bob, through our MP had raised that, right, in terms of saying, well, there you guys have given, you're competing now for a grant that you yourselves are applying for. And it wasn't, I don't think it was as much an issue for Bob as it was for us supporting that competing grant. And I think that's a, you know what, to me, it was a, in this particular instance, it was more about the time crunch of having about an hour and a half or two hours with which to try to meet the demands of and respond to the wishes of a volunteer group trying to do something for their association, in which I was trying to reach out to you guys. And I get the aspect of not having the opportunity to discuss it, not having the opportunity to deal with it in here, but I also was feeling the pressures of trying to respond to and deal with a local volunteer group who are trying to do something for their association. So, that's why I put it out that way. Councillor Javecov first?
I think it's important to have the opportunity to deal with some of these time-sensitive issues that way, whether it's an email poll or a phone poll. You know, there's, there's some exceptions, but I mean, generally, we need to be able to respond to those kind of things.
It's, it's, no, I got, honestly, for me, I try not to do them. I try, I would far rather have it done here in front of the public, the gallery, that's why we do the things we do here. But there's times that you sometimes get into that situation, and so I get, you know, we had the policy about having it being unanimous so that council, everybody is comfortable with the decision. So, from that perspective, I had received only, we had an hour and a half timeframe basically, or two hours, and Brenda and I were scrambling and Kelsey trying to get to everybody to, in order to try to meet the time crunch of the group. So, anyway, that's why I brought it back today for that conversation. But I hear your point in terms of...
Well, yeah, I just like us to sometime dialogue because I don't wish to put our MP in an awkward position, embarrass anybody, but, you know, we're, we have a fiduciary duty to the corporation as council members. And yet, we may be then, are we not working against the corporation if we then start supporting two or three or one community group applying for the same grant? I always take my fiduciary duties as overriding my support of the golf club or curling club. And I just like some informed chat about that because I'm, I, I just have that concern, and I'm just, it spins from the matter that you just raised with the Southeast Grain People.
Cleaning Co-op, yeah. Yeah, absolutely. You know, when this come through, it was a, it was an excellent example of us being in a situation where you want to support your community groups, you want to be there, and they need that support. But what do we do when we get to the point of saying, okay, well, we gotta support one over the other then, right? So, we need to have that discussion problem. Jim?
So, leaving aside the specific issue, or I guess first on the specific issue, that letter's been sent under your signature.
Yeah.
We would appreciate a motion from council ratifying that decision, one. And two, I think we need to hear from council whether the standard we're seeking to meet is all seven councillors approve a phone poll or, or an email poll, or whether it is unanimity among those who respond. Councillor Rogers was out of cell phone range all up last week. If the standard is unanimity of all seven councillors, any councillor who is out of reach, it means nothing can happen, so. But that's, there's no clarity in the current direction of council. The corporate officer and I disagree on what the direction is. Be great if you gave us clear direction today.
Thank you. So, councillor McFadden?
Well, first, I'll move ratification of the, of the letter that was sent, your worship.
Seconded, councillor Wilber, uh, sorry, Schuman, you are?
I'm Schuman.
Discussion? Councillor Javecov?
Is it possible in those situations that specifically to put a rider in there that obviously our application takes precedence and, and, you know, if you're giving more grants out, then that would, that one would take second priority.
Yeah, I think we, when we're applying for grants, I think we really need to now be conscious about that aspect of, do we give us, even give a letter of support to somebody if it's a competing grant on behalf of the corporation of the City of Dawson Creek? Right? I think, I, I think that if, in that situation going out, back on the Build Canada where we're applying for $4 million grant to the province and the feds, do we even give another letter of support and put our MP or the MLA in that situation? I think we need to have that kind of conversation. Councillor Wil, uh, Schuman, sorry? Why am I doing that?
So, to me, it feels a little different, the two situations. I know that the curling club is applying to get funds to put towards one of our buildings, but it is still a community group that's doing the applying. And in our other situation with the Go Canada funds, I mean, I, I agree with you on that one. Perhaps we shouldn't have approved the second letter of support because that was us, that was us applying for that. So, we should have prioritized us, and I, I think we, we did do some prior, prioritizing with regards to that, like, yeah, we support them, but we support us more, right? We did that. And so, I know that in the email last week, it was sort of brought up that we could also do this with this one. And so, for me, I was like, okay, well, I'm happy to support both applications, but I would prioritize the one that the funding is coming back to my facility. If we can do that, that's better. But I feel like, the same as councillor Wilber had expressed when we dealt with, when we talked about these things last meeting, you know, to support community groups, we kind of, I feel like we kind of have to support them. And if there's opportunity to prioritize, of course, we would choose to prioritize the one that's gonna benefit our bottom line.
Yeah, it's, like I say, I think it'll, it's, it's gonna take some conversation.
I think, I think we're starting around the issue here. We need to have an informed conversation of what... We need to have an informed conversation of what MP Zimmer said. But I think I'd like to put the question, that the motion before us be dealt with.
Thank you. All in favor? Opposed? Scared? And the, now the issue of kind of the structure, the governance structure and process for handling these things, if, if you want unanimity of the board, unanimous consent of an email poll or telephone poll on an issue, or unanimous support of those available, and I think we should give, I'd like that clarity, and I certainly think we need to do it for you guys as well as to our administration. Counselor Jevakoff?
Well, I'd make a motion that we use the same standard as we would if we were in council. If you, if it requires a simple majority, then it would be a simple majority of the, of council.
Okay. Thank you. Seconded, Counselor Schuman, discussion? Counselor Parslal?
Yeah, I, I think it's a little more nuanced than that blanket-wise. I think it depends what grants we're talking about. I, can we, I'd like to defer this until we've had this discussion vis a vis the advice given to us by our MP and then resolve this motion at that time.
But I think this policy or procedural policy is if I get asked for a specific issue that we need to get council's endorsement, for me to either send a letter or agree to or act on behalf of council, and I do this without having the formal council meeting take place, that if I send an email out or I do a phone poll with council, if I get the majority of council approval, that you guys are giving me the approval to proceed on that basis, either with email or telephone, when required. Jim?
Your current direction, I mean, keeping in mind that it would be difficult and potentially impossible to find any provision in the community charter that allows you to do a phone poll to gauge, to gauge people's view on a matter. What you've said in the past is situations will come up where there isn't time to bring everybody together, and if it's a no-brainer, if absolutely everybody says, yeah, go ahead, you'll do it, you'll bring it to the next meeting for ratification. That's what you've got right now. If it's controversial in any way, and even one person says, you know, that's, there are issues here that are engaged, what about the advice of the MP? Shouldn't we get together and talk about that? Even one person says that, then it, it's the formal notice under the community charter for a special meeting, and you go in that direction. That's where you are. What you haven't directed staff clearly is whether that's one person out of those who respond, or it's the reverse. It has to be positive affirmation from all seven councillors. That's what I'm looking at. It's got nothing to do with the specific issue. This could be about a letter of support, it could be about a road closure, it could be about taking the water station to the Pousse Parade, it could be any of those things.
Yeah, it's, and so for me, I've stayed away from it because I obviously get the, the business of council should take place here, but there are situations like that that I, I feel like I want to try to respond to the needs of the community if possible. Counselor Parslal?
Yeah, I, I hear you in that. I just think that the, that there's a, it could be a different standard for different things. That's all that my instinct is telling me, because if, if it's such as having permission to take the water filter station, that's a no-brainer, right? I don't think we would need unanimous, but if it's something that might negatively or impact the, an application of a, the corporate body, I, I want to have a full discussion about that.
Absolutely.
So that's why I'm saying, I think I'm with staff, that they need clarity on this, and I'm with you on dealing with most of these matters that just come up that, you know, just helping community events or, or what have you, but I just have a bit of a red flag on things that might have implications that we may not fully understand, that we'd need to listen to staff about or advice that you've had from other agencies. So that's why I'm just saying it's more nuanced than being just a blanket one way or the other way.
And that's why I honestly have stayed, tried to stay away from doing it as much as possible, and I don't know how many times we've engaged that, but the business should be here. Thank you. Further questions? Further comments?
So the motion on the floor is a simple majority.
So the motion is a simple majority.
Yeah, and I've, I'd like to refer the matter to a, after, to be resolved after we had a full discussion of the fiduciary responsibilities to the corporation as it relates to, as it sort of spins off from the advice we got from our MP.
Okay, so you want, you're making a motion to table?
To, to the next council meeting if that's timely in the, for staff.
Okay, thank you. So a motion to table this, a motion to the next meeting? Counselor Schuman, this, all in favor? Opposed? Scared? Thank you. So we'll bring it back to the next meeting. We're at, now past 9:05, so I want to get, move to our delegations. Our first delegation this morning is Mr. Wallace, who's in attendance to raise some issues with us that he's identified. So the delegation table is right here, Mr. Wallace, please come up and... Welcome, good morning. Thanks for coming this morning.
Good. I'd like to thank you for allowing me to address you.
That's what this is about.
Okay. The reason I came today is basically on articles that have been put out in the papers. The first article was going over to a mechanical garbage system, which I'm going to say I'm all for because anybody that's ever drove around the area, when it's garbage collection, you meet your ravens and your garbage that's laying on the street, and the garbage man end up picking it up. My concern is the size of the container that you are deciding on. Second article that I read was basically you're, you're thinking of going to the 180-liter container. I'd like to kind of bring forth the history as a garbage collection in Dawson Creek from a taxpayer's point of view. I moved here 18 years ago. When I moved here, I had asked the neighbors what you were allowed to put out for garbage. I was advised at that time, basically, two garbage cans. These garbage cans are the ones you buy basically at, at Walmart. They're 120 liters each. They hold two black garbage containers each, each garbage container, plastic bag, being about 60 liters in size. Over time, I noticed that basically this really wasn't the limit. The limit is whatever the garbage man is willing to take. On my street, sometimes you'll see eight, nine bags, they'll pick them up. I know there's a bylaw passed in 2009 by council at that time. They attempted to limit garbage down to two bags of garbage or two standard containers of 45 liters each. And why it was never enforced, I do not know, but even though council passed it, administration didn't enforce it, so it just went by the roadside. So what I'm trying to say right now in Dawson Creek, your limit on garbage is basic as much as the garbage man's willing to take. Your other, my other concern is you're thinking, I believe right now, of the 180-liter size. Do we have, and the reason you're going this route is because you want to see more recycling. We have two recyclers in town. We have Dawson Creek recyclers. They have one depot basically down by the ICBC building, limited parking, and if you go in there, it's questionable how much more capacity they can take. Has anybody approached them to find out if they can start to take more capacity or what their limits are? Your other one is bins that are being looked after by a company out of Fort St. John. It's the one I use because I live in the Trombley area, the closest one is over at the high school. But I do notice that they fill very fast, and my inquiries would suggest that they only come in about once a week to dump them. And a lot of people, when they find that the bins are full, they just throw their recyclables on the ground beside them. I think Dawson Creek has, residents have gone for recycling, and those who have really gone into it, do it, but I am, I'm of a feeling right now that you're at capacity or very close to capacity just for what's being done now, let alone try to enforce more recycling. You may need to provide more services. Your best recycling will probably be curbside, but the problem is you don't have that system enforced as you're bringing this other new system in. And then on top of that, I don't think you can produce that system at the current garbage cost of $12 per month or, or that fee of 24 every two months. I don't know if you want to go that route, and the reason I say that is because the sewer infrastructure increase was quite substantial this year, and if you bring in curbside garbage, well, you're going to move from basically a 15% increase in utility costs this year to maybe a 25% increase in costs. I don't, I don't know what the cost would be, but it would be increasing. And I'd also like to bring forth that in 2017, you've already scheduled another 5% increase just on the sewer infrastructure. So what I'm trying to say is maybe you should go as a size of the 240-liter, accept that and hope that you have facilities that can handle the current recycling.
Thank you.
That's my points.
Thank you. Any questions? For Mr. Wallace?
Oh, can I ask one? It's related to this, and I know Counselor Rogers talked about repair of these garbage containers and stuff, but have you guys found out what the life expectancy of these containers are and who's going to pay for them when they start to fail? The reason I ask this is these are, these are containers that are going to be lifted, you know, pulled up and dumped and then put back mechanically in a working environment of anywhere from 30 above to 45 below, you know? That's pretty severe conditions. So how long is the life expectancy of these containers when they're mechanically, you know, lifted?
Jim, through to you, to Kevin, can, we have any idea of the-
Do you have any figures on it?
I don't, off the top of my head.
Because who pays for them afterwards? You know, like if, if the life expectancy is like, say, five years, is it then the taxpayer that buys the next set or?
So the new contract through Waste Management who bid and were successful in it are providing the containers for the first time to the homeowners, and then replacement and maintenance after that would be the homeowners as it is today, the same as your garbage cans today. So yes, though the homeowner would take over that. But that's a good question, and we'll try and get some information in terms of what the average life expectancy is of those containers, because there's all kinds of communities, Fort St. John and Chatwin and different communities and Grant Prairie have been using these containers for a fair period of time. So we'll get some information on that. We haven't talked about really, this new contract that came about was, our contract with Waste Management was up, we put it out for tender, they were the successful bid, and came with the process of we're going to go to an automated system with the hydraulic container and trucks. The issue of Jason, the Waste Management employee, could probably run for the king of Canada. He's the most popular dude in town.
He will not be out there.
Because Jason would do that for the residents, right? Jason would go out and if you had two bags, one bag, or eight bags, Jason would collect the stuff for people irrespective of what our bylaw said, irrespective of what was out there, Jason would pick it up. And so the new system really is about too full for us, ensuring, one, we have consistency, they bring about the process of what they're going to use for equipment, and for us also try to manage some of those long-term effects of landfill costs and all of that. So we took the current averages of the waste collection, and that's why the decision was made to go to the 180 liters based on that decision. We had the proposal last year about curbside recycling that we dealt with through a partnership with MMNBC provincially where we could have had some funding assistance, but council at that point decided we weren't going to go to curbside. We haven't had, this council hasn't had any conversation at all about recycling. I have engaged Jeremy a bit about his future of capacity, if ever there was curbside recycling, just as a conversation with him, not on behalf of council, just to kind of get a sense of that. But he was applying to, through that process last year, to be the depot for the recycling center, and so based on that, I'm assuming he's understanding the business needs of what it would take and what increased volume it would have and what he would need to do, because he was working with the proponents at that time to be, because each, whoever is the recycling, whoever is and when and if this council ever, city moves to a curbside recycling, the waste, whoever collects it, has to have a depot to take it to, and Jeremy is the only one here really to do that. So he was in the running to try to be the successful proponent for that curbside depot. But we haven't had any conversation about that at all in terms of this council and what we're going to do with that. But the hope is, from my perspective certainly, the amount of demand that the city has demonstrated towards the use of recycling, this community has been very, very proactive about how and what they do, so. So anyway, I just wanted to answer a couple of those questions. Counselor Jevakoff?
My understanding is that we've already got 180-liter ordered.
Yeah.
Is there an option, pardon?
Yeah, no, you're right.
Is there an option for an individual to opt for a bigger container if they purchase it on their own?
They can purchase a second 180. You've got to go consistency with respect to the supply from Waste Management, is my understanding. Jim?
Through your worship, council examined both options. Whether off the hop, you could, you could choose to take a 180 or a 240, there'd be a larger dump charge for the, ultimately, council decided to go with standard 180-liter containers, and so that means you can go 180 or 360. If you decide to have two, you pay twice. That's what's council's decision.
Do you get a second container if you find that the 180 isn't sufficient for your needs, but you're increasing then the costs, so?
I was encrusted when they put in a two-bag limit and actually enforced it.
Yeah.
I do know you are going to receive a quite a substantial influx of phone calls when the system comes in from angry people. You are going to get quite an influx of phone calls from bin owners, because unfortunately, what is going to happen is your people are going to go look for the easiest place to dump their garbage. So your apartment buildings will suddenly discover that their bins are full in the morning because people have sneaked in at night and put their extra garbage in it. So you, you're going to see some, you know, kind of backlash.
Yeah.
Also, it was bad enough that they actually had to send out an enforcement officer with the garbage man because he was being verbally threatened.
Yeah. Hey, you're going through a change, you're going to go through some transition, right, in terms of, and I think the majority, for me, most of the, you know, you drive around the neighborhood, most of the people have their one garbage can out or their two, but it's the ones, to me, the one benefit to this is no more garbage in bags, it's getting ripped apart and it makes a mess of the neighborhood, right?
Initially, you will see a little bit of overcrowd.
Thanks for coming in this morning, we appreciate it, appreciate your input. Next up, item 62, we have Scott Butler and Doug, Doug Scott. Good morning, gents, and you have a presentation?
Just get this set up.
Sure.
Good morning.
Hey, morning.
Welcome.
Yeah, thank you, thank you. First of all, your worship, thank you very much for having us here this morning. It's, it's never been clearer to me, other than, you know, you sit here and, and watch all the decisions you guys have to make and you really, it's a difficult job, you have to arbitrate a lot of opposing viewpoints, and, you know, I think that, it became clear to me as I was sitting there that this is what's going on. You have a lot of things, whether that's about garbage or, or about your ability to make a decision by email, there's a lot of competing interests and things that you have to balance, and it's a difficult job. and it's a difficult job, and you have to weigh that against the, you know, what you've been entrusted with from the community to make a good decision for the quality of the community and the residents who live here, and of course, taking care of the public purse. It's a difficult job. So I just wanted to emphasize that, and I think in the context of that, relay some information, because the difficult part that you have in making decisions is you come here and you're given some information and you try to make the best decision based on the information you have, and oftentimes you might send out, you know, you ask for a report and, you know, you're waiting for a report back from an MP or something, and, you know, you're gathering more information to make the best decision. And if anything, I think that's the main reason we're here, is we've heard snippets of information, we know that this issue is a big one for us and certainly for the community and the people we've talked to, and if it's not clear already, we're talking about the proposed frac sand facility between Eighth and Fifteenth Street. And we hear snippets of information that doesn't align with the information that we're gathering, and it's a process. You know, we're out there gathering information, and the more we find out, the more we know, and as we go along, even last night, Doug and I, when we came, I flew into Grand Prairie last night, and we drove up and looked at the facility in Wembley, and we're there at ten-thirty at night when it was operating and seeing what was going on. So you kind of, the more information you get, the more you know, and so I just want to present, you know, our view based on the information that we've gathered today. So that being said, I'll get into it here. In terms of an outline, I'm not going to read all this, this is just to guide you to where we're going, so just tell you about who we are, and then we'll get into the details and finally talk to you about what our plan is going forward and go from there. So first of all, who are we? So I'm Scott Butler, you might have gathered that in the beginning, this is Doug Scott. Doug was born and raised here, his family's been in the community for a long time. Myself and my brother Matt and Doug decided a number of years ago to build rental apartments in Dawson Creek. That was in early 2009, and went out and started looking for land and then brought some investors on board, including some local investors, and managed to be welcomed in the community and built some, we think, are really nice new rental apartments, and ultimately that led to finishing them last June, built out the site, and we had an ownership group from Ontario come along, and as part of a bigger purchase, they've bought fifty percent ownership in the apartments, so they're a big group out of Ontario. We are committed to Dawson Creek. Obviously Doug's got a lot of connections here, and, you know, we think it's a great area and committed to the quality of life here, committed to bringing high-quality rental apartments, and we want to open up a conversation about what's good for the community here. Just to put it in perspective, I guess we own just over two hundred rental apartments, or rent, not apartments specifically, but over two hundred rentals in town, it's a significant number. The group that I manage with my brother, we're building over seven hundred apartments in Western Canada, in Dawson Creek specifically, just our rental apartments is just over seventeen percent of the market, pretty big, and have, we have over three hundred and fifty local residents in our various properties. Just so everybody knows, this is the community we're talking about up in Montney, it's just across the road, I'm sure you see it when you're driving down the highway. So we've touched on the fact that we are talking about the proposed frac sand distribution facility. As I said in the beginning, I mean, this is about information gathering for us, from what we've seen, we think there's very serious implications. Obviously, I met Daryl this morning, and, you know, he's a nice guy, seems like a nice guy, and he's got his views on it, and I kind of, we're unfortunately, we're diametrically opposed on this issue, but, you know, in his interpretation, it's okay, and we go and look at it and go, holy smokes, this is crazy. So I just want to emphasize that, that I, you know, when you look at light industrial, this does not strike us as light industrial. We've looked at a lot of facilities, later on in my presentation, actually, and we continue to gather information, and later on in my presentation, I say everything we've found has been in heavy industrial so far. We actually found Chatwin is in a light industrial zoned area, so there is the one exception that we've found so far. But they tend to be facilities that are well outside of the core and in heavy industrial areas, and based on what we saw in Wembley, we could see why. So just, this is looking, it's not a great picture, but there's a fence there in the foreground, and then all the soil is being moved, and the reason this all came up is then we start gathering information, all of a sudden there was lots of activity on the site, and it seemed like there was a progression of decision-making going on without all the information being out there, and that's where, you know, we're looking at trying to gather information on our side, too, and there's been conversations with the city, and, you know, we're hearing different things, and so then we start gathering more information to see what's going on. You know, and the further work happens on the site, if you look at this picture here, there's our apartments in the background, and this is the land that's being cleared, and you can kind of tell we're right next door. So, yeah, I think suffice to say, lots of work going on, and again, I think I want to emphasize that it appears there's been decisions made to proceed already, yet, to our knowledge, there hasn't been anything being made available publicly, and we just want to make sure that, given the potential impact from what we've seen from other facilities, I think it's in everybody's best interest to make sure that there's information out there about what is actually going to happen, and it's realistic information based on real expectations of what's going to happen. And, you know, we hear that it's a seventy thousand square foot enclosed facility, and the one in Wembley is a similar size, and it's significant. It's a picture of the Wembley facility. Can you look back so I can see that picture again?
Sure.
Real quick. That's Wembley? That's Wembley. So it's, you know, you look at it, it's about, we pasted off, it's about seventy thousand square feet. It might be a little bit bigger, it might be seventy-five. We'll find out the exact number, we're going to contact the company itself. The height, just based on looking at it, is somewhere in the neighborhood of forty-five to fifty feet from what we can tell. You know, there was, we were there at ten-thirty last night, there was trucks coming in and out, they were unloading rail cars. When they unload the rail cars, the dust billows out the doors of the building when they're loading up the trucks. It wasn't too bad last night, but there's still a bit of a haze coming off, and they said when the wind's blowing, there's dust everywhere. It's a significant operation. So, again, in conveying information, you know, we've heard that the proponent, based on the knowledge that he has, and as I said, Daryl, he's a nice guy, but from what we've seen and what we've heard, I mean, we were there at ten-thirty last night talking to the guys running the operation, and they said, you know, this is a twenty-four-seven operation, we only shut down two days of the year, Christmas Day and New Year's Day for part of the day, and otherwise, it's all through the night. They run shift work through the night, unloading these rail cars and loading up trucks and have it going twenty-four-seven. We also know that fracs go through the night, I mean, when you're doing a well, it goes on all night, it's twenty-four-seven. A frac itself can use twenty-five to thirty-five rail cars per well, that equates to seventy or eighty truckloads per well. We also know that the wells pull sand from all kinds of different locations, but there's often obviously more than one well going on at any time, so you end up with, when we were at the Wembley facility, there's, they said, you know, when there's a big frac going on, the trucks are lined up, they said three trucks wide, you know, a few hundred meters deep lining up to load up the sand and get out to the well site, and it's a big deal. I mean, they said in a busy twelve-hour period, there's over eighty trucks, so it definitely adds up, and that's from what we can tell a similar-sized facility what's being proposed in Dawson Creek. And then the question, you know, the question, of course, is, well, you know, we've, the information, and even Daryl admits, he says, well, we don't plan on doing that much, you know, we're eight to twelve rail cars, and, you know, it won't be anything near that, and, yeah, but what happens when demand goes up? You know, obviously, you start with eight to ten, and as any business endeavor, you hope for it to increase, and, you know, if there's demand for more, guess what? You know, I wouldn't expect Daryl to stop and say, no, 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 we said eight to twelve rail cars, we're not going to do any more. You know, naturally, you'd want to serve more, and if you keep having more drilling going on, and if LNG does go ahead, you know, what's the expectation? What do we think's going to happen? So I did want to clarify that last point, that the other facilities, other than the one in Chatwin, we did find were heavy industrial zoning, and they tend to be well outside of major centers. I guess this is another one where, you know, Daryl and I are diametrically opposed, I know we've talked about, you know, there won't be that many trucks, it's just not the size of operation, but, you know, with all due respect, you know, it's a big facility, I mean, I wouldn't... How big is it? Fifty, so about fifty thousand square feet, so not seventy. So if the Wembley facility's seventy, then this one's fifty still, even a fifty thousand square foot facility, that's a big facility, and if you're going to spend that much money, you're not just going to have a few trucks per day, this thing is, shouldn't you expect it to be active? You expect to want to pay back that kind of investment. So, you know, I just wanted to be clear that, you know, in our minds, based on the information that we're hearing, we don't see a correlation between the information that's being provided and what we'd see happening if we were to build a facility like that, what the expectation So back to my original discussion about providing information, and I think this is a significant issue, we believe, based on our, what we've seen out there in our research, that it would have significant quality of life issues for, certainly for our residents and for downtown Dawson Creek as a whole. It's a big industrial operation close to downtown, and we believe that the residents in Dawson Creek need to know about what is being contemplated there and need to see what's going on. You know, if you look at it from a broad perspective of how cities develop and what the plan is, and, you know, I'll flip up the OCP next, but, you know, this is really, you know, a throwback to, you know, when cities would develop, you know, big operations downtown, when the railroads got going, and the push has been to get that stuff on the outskirts of town and big industry outside of town rather than downtown, and this seems opposed to that general philosophy and certainly opposed to the city's own desires in terms of the way that they'd like to see the town develop. And everyone we talked to, I mean, Doug knows a lot of people in town, and whenever he mentions it to somebody, they kind of go, oh, why would we do that? Why would we, you know, put a facility downtown? It doesn't make any sense. So when I say the residents themselves, I know the OCP, the Official Community Plan, goes through a big public consultation process when it gets designed, and the landing question is actually shown as mixed use, and I know that the city can't make that happen, but it certainly, you know, sets out the expectation for how the city and the residents would like to see development, and if there was any kind of discretion in interpreting an application, which we believe there is, then, you know, you'd think or you'd like to see it be consistent with the plans of the city, and that mixed-use designation in the OCP, it would make it really hard for that whole area to go in the mixed-use direction once this facility is built. You're talking about a decision that has decades-long impacts on that area, because once you build a facility like this and it's serving the natural gas drilling industry that's going to go on for decades here, it'll be there for decades, and that'll prevent anyone from coming in and saying, yes, I want to redevelop this area and put in some mixed use and some commercial and some residential, that's not going to happen, so this does have decades-long impact. Another point, I guess there is a current La Prairie facility out at the west end of town, and in the Official Community Plan, it's shown as heavy industrial right now. That's one of the arguments you hear, is that, well, that one's in light industrial now. I think that obviously the residents and the city, when they came out with the Official Community Plan, when it was last revised, realized that, you know, maybe that wasn't the right place to put it. For that matter, Louisiana Pacific's in light industrial. I don't think anybody here would agree that that's a light industrial use, so, you know, I think that, let's recognize that that would be corrected going forward. So you've got the current facility with the Arrow Well on the left, and then the contemplated facility, as you know, where it is in that big orange area, which is shown as mixed use in the future. We want to talk specifically about heavy industrial and light industrial, and the differences, the businesses that are not included in light industrial in your zoning bylaw, you've got fertilizer plant, auto wrecking and junkyard, auto towing and storage, slaughterhouse, meatpacking, sawmill, stock auction, kennel, airport, fuel sale, so what do these all have in common? They all have heavy equipment, they all have noise, they all have some element of pollution. I would venture to say that it's also what a frac sand distribution facility has in common, it's noise, potential pollution, and heavy machinery. Back to the, again, this is in the context of light industrial versus heavy industrial, you know, does that look like a light industrial facility? So what are we looking for? As I mentioned, I think that, you know, a fair and open dialogue, we want the information to be out there, we want transparency, we think that a review of similar facilities in other cities would be beneficial and expand that. You know, we haven't seen enough, you know, even Doug and I are looking at it going, we really need to travel around and look at more. You know, we think that it would behoove the city to spend more time looking at other facilities, making sure that what you're being told is accurate, and if it is and everything looks great, then great, but I think that everybody needs to really look at what's being proposed and look at other facilities and say, does this match? You know, does it make sense? And really look at that. So, and part of that is ensuring the local residents, you know, consider their safety, the health, the quality of life, consider all that in the decision. Just checking my notes to make sure I've covered everything. Just to, another point of interest, aside from the twenty-four-seven operation, the number of trucks, the dust that we saw at the Wembley facility, and that is an indoor facility and may not have the same dust control measures, I don't want to put a whole bunch of fear out there, but I'm just saying that if that's the type of facility, let's make absolutely sure that we've got a great design here in keeping down the dust, because there, it's, you know, they said when the wind's blowing, it's clouds, it's just, it's a hundred feet high and it's blowing, and the bushes, you know, half a kilometer away are covered in dust, and, you know, they've got one resident that's about a half a kilometer away, and they had to turn off the backup warning signal on the front-end loader because it kept them up at night. So that's one guy half a kilometer away, and we're talking about, you know, over three hundred residents right next door, plus more residential just to the north, we've got downtown right here, this is a much closer... This is a much closer operation. Another point was that, you know, we've read in the paper that there's a suggestion that frac sand's the same sand you have in playgrounds, you know, and it's hard to find good information on it. I was Googling that myself, trying to figure it out, and there is different information out there. But the guys at the facility in Wembley last night said, "Absolutely not. You would not want your kids playing with this." And in fact, the facility in Chetwind, run by Source Energy, the manager of that facility was quoted in the paper saying that this is absolutely not the sand. I could read the direct quote, but he said, "You know, don't have this sand in your playgrounds. This is, this gets in your lungs and won't get out. It's a finer, it's a finer grain. There's silica. It is a health issue. On every bill of loading coming out of that Wembley facility, in all caps, at the bottom of the thing, it says, 'can cause cancer.'" So, you know, this is an issue. You know, they don't take it lightly, and I don't think the city of Dawson Creek wants to take it lightly. So to sum up, what do we plan to do? We will continue to talk to the local committee. I think now that, obviously, the plans are moving along, and there's been so much work in the last couple of weeks there, and we realize that this appears to be going ahead, we do want to raise the public awareness. We will, pardon me, sorry. We will continue to raise the public awareness of this facility and get more information out there and hope that the community is involved in the process and that you all have more information as well to make a good decision. We will remain committed to an open and respective dialogue with council staff and the community. You know, I think we probably started off on the wrong foot, wondering what we could do about this. And I think the most important thing now is, let's just get the information out there. Let's make sure that we maintain a dialogue, we get the information out there, and let the facts speak for themselves and let the information tell the story. And we will increase our call for an open and transparent process to review this significant decision. You'll see that coming out in the following weeks, and we hope we're aligned with you on that. And finally, of course, we'll take measures we feel are necessary to protect our tenants, our assets, our asset and our friends in the community. Thank you very much for your time, everyone, and we're here for any questions if you have them.
So, questions? Councilor Jevakoff.
This presentation is different from what we got on our agenda here, but one section on your, on the previous, on the one that we've got, the version, it says some of the mitigation issues that you're, that you would be recommending. Can you go over those?
Yeah, I mean, I think we, as I stated in the beginning, as you continue to gather information, you learn more about it. You know, it's an evolving process in how you come to a decision, and I think we'd heard information that led us to believe that it wasn't such a significant facility. We kind of, you know, we heard the feedback from the city through the proponent about how it wasn't that big a deal, and there was going to be all this dust mitigation, and there's not that many trucks, and it's enclosed. And so you start to go, "Okay, well, maybe this won't be so bad." But then we continued to gather information throughout the week since we sent in that presentation and even, you know, like I said, visited the facility last night. And we definitely, you know, we're not at the stage of suggesting mitigation. We're at the stage of suggesting we really need to get more information about this so everybody's aware of what's going on. So I'd, you know, rather not talk about mitigation at this point.
Thank you. Any further questions? Councilor Parslow.
Yeah, this is a question for staff, because I'm a little farty on something here. There was a resolution of this council that basically, through legal advice, we were retaining our options of making decisions about this property. Part of the process was a community charade. And then, I believe, subsequent to that, and I wasn't at this council meeting, and that's why my memory's a little hazy, this is why I'm asking staff that that resolution was rescinded, was it, and replaced with something else? Or what was the subsequent action taken by council after that resolution, you know, a few months later?
So through your worship, the original decision taken was to contemplate rezoning the area in order to prevent a frac sand facility and pull the community charade together, public input, et cetera. That had the effect of making it impossible for anyone to apply for or receive a development permit on the property until you had completed your deliberations. Subsequent to that, based on a number of factors, council determined to leave the existing zoning in place, and so that's what's there now.
Go ahead. Supplementary, so what was the reasoning for that change? Since I wasn't at the meeting?
That was in the closed meeting.
Oh, thank you.
It had to do with legal advice, and I'm not a liberty to share.
No, no.
But what you need to know is that your decision point on that's gone. The current zoning is the current zoning. An application under the current zoning's been received, a development permit application. You can't prevent a frac sand facility there. That decision point is, was in the past.
Yeah. Thank you. Further questions? Councilor Rogers.
Yeah, I was just going through what you were looking for, like the dust mitigation and everything else. Just bluntly, would you approve any type of a frac sand facility, or is that just a no? You don't want to see a frac sand facility there?
We would be, we would not be opposed to a facility that meets the light industrial zoning. I know that that's where we completely differ. I mean, I, you know, there's this, the city believes that it meets light industrial zoning. We wholeheartedly disagree based on our review of what we've seen. And I suppose, I mean, if you had a completely enclosed facility and no dust ever came out, and you didn't have the associated noise issues that you have with such a facility, it kind of makes it impossible. I mean, you're kind of, you're looking at it going, "Well, how could you do that and still have a frac sand distribution facility?" You'd have to design something pretty unique. So, you know, it's a qualified no. I just don't think it's a, yeah. Now, when you talk about the, I beg to differ with Mr. Schut about the decision being gone because I don't, I don't believe that the interpretation of light industrial and a frac sand facility is accurate. And I think that there is an element of social license in doing something like this, that you have to get the community on board with, with a decision with these, this type of ramification. And, you know, even CN with their tactics, I think they have to recognize that you can't just go and plow ahead without a social license. And you see that in a lot of big projects. Certainly, this is big for Dawson Creek. It's not on the scale of an LNG facility, but it's clear that you have to get the people on board, and that requires a lot of information sharing.
Thank you. So thank you so much for coming in this morning, and obviously, we appreciate the update, the information. As you guys started out with your suggestion, the governance, the policy, the decisions that council make are based on all of the information that comes forward, and then the tough decisions that flow as a result of that are a whole wide range of factors. But certainly, we appreciate you guys coming in this morning, giving us some of those aspects that you, obviously, are significant investors in our community and have done an amazing job, first of all, on Upper Montney Estates. So absolutely, we want to thank you for coming in this morning and giving us some time and some information on your concerns.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we're going to recess for seven minutes?
Seven.
I'm always back to order now that I've got the quorum back.
I think some of those bureaucrats in Health Canada are probably under a lot of pressure from Harper. I mean, science has got no place in Harper's government.
So we're going to get back into our agenda, back under Mayor's Business. Item 9.2, we received an email from Dave Mize from the Slow Pitch Group. They've requested overnight camping at the Lakota Fields and request for concession trailers for their annual tournament on July 9th to 11th. And I brought it back under Mayor's Business because there's another kind of situation where it come just past the cutoff of our new schedule, so we couldn't get it into the regular agenda. So I brought it back under Mayor's Business for consideration, because we don't meet until July 7th.
The mayor has two more days than the rest of you.
Councilor Parslow?
Yeah, my, the Lakota Field is that part between Lakota and the airport. That's my understanding.
I know. Actually, that's a good question. Do you know exactly where they're talking about camping, Barry?
Usually, they camp where the, I believe it's the, where they do the fall fair.
Camping, okay, yeah. So we're talking a little bit north of where you're talking about in that area where the camping is for the fall fair.
Yeah. Councilor.
I'd be prepared to move that we facilitate the, or give permission for camping in the Lakota Fields for the July 9th to 11th, and orders the 14th to 16th board tournaments.
And the placement of their concession tournament?
Yes, and the concession. Thank you.
Thank you. Second to Councilor Schuman, discussion? Any questions?
I just...
Councilor Rogers?
Have they done this before?
Yeah, they do it on an annual basis.
They've never done it this late in August, though, and I think we better, just sending Brenda out to check the dates of the fall fair and exhibition because...
Fourth to the ninth.
Okay, so this is after that? Okay. This is the latest they've ever done one, is this August 4th?
And they clean up all their own garbage in their...
They look after all their own.
So they don't have to do nothing.
Okay. Any questions, further questions, comments? All in favor? Opposed? Carrie, thank you. I've brought back an item we dealt with at our last meeting, was a development permit, variance permit request from Darrell Berman at 9133 Calverly Crescent for reconsideration. I brought it back because I had a meeting with Mr. Berman after the meeting, and seeing it some, he'd asked for some further clarification and information. For me, the understanding I had and my opinion I had based on council's conversation or through that was that the issue around, seemed to be around the coach house, in my view, was the reason that council were more concerned about the request than the height extension. And so Mr. Berman's indication to me was he wants to build a detached garage on the property and where they live on Calverly. It's a hip-roof home that they have, Loether built, Treble built years and years ago, wants to build a similar roof design for the garage, which means in order to accommodate that, he has to have a height variance of about five or six, six feet, I think, over what's currently allowed. So through that, then, thought, "Well, if I'm going to have that additional space, I'll develop it." And the original thought was maybe a coach house. And then, meeting with Nigel, it was, "We can't have a coach house because of a number of factors, where you are in relation to hydrant and all those considerations." So he said, "Okay, well, I'm not going to have a coach house, but I'm just going to develop it into a storage base and space." So I, it wasn't clear to me when I, we dealt with it, that council was opposed to it because it was a coach house or because of the height variance. And from that perspective, I wanted to bring it back today for council's further clarification on information. Jim?
So through your worship, you brought it back for reconsideration, so it's as if you're seeing it for the first time?
Yeah.
So there's no motion on the floor, no questions have been asked for clarification?
Right.
The previous, the previous decision no longer exists because you've brought it back for reconsideration?
Right.
So council needs to proceed as though you're seeing it for the first time?
Okay. Councilor Jevakoff and Councilor Parslow.
I'll move that we approve the variance, and if we get a second, or I'll speak to it.
Thank you. Second to Councilor McFadden. Councilor Parslow, you had a question?
Yeah, mine was just for, again, just understanding the community charter. So if a mayor brings back an item for reconsideration, there doesn't have to be any new information, Jim, or for council?
That is correct. The mayor can bring it back because the first color he saw when he looked out the window in the morning was red.
Yeah.
You know? He's not constrained in any way why he brings it back.
I have 30 days.
A council member, there needs to be some new information.
Two council members, isn't it, or eight? Two can bring it back on the basis of new information.
Yeah, thank you.
Again, you're just not the mayor. I'm sorry.
I, you have, you can be mayor if you want. You have 30 days, I think, as well, don't I? It has to be brought back within 30 days.
Yeah, no, I just like to know the community charter applications.
Thank you. Further questions, further comments, further discussion? Councilor Parslow?
Yep. So I'm just reading from Senior Planner's original report. Council should consider the impact of permitting a two-story accessory structure, and if this could set a precedent for future requests and approvals. It can be generally interpreted that the intent of the current height restriction of accessory structures in residential zones is to limit accessory structures to one story. The intent may also have been to reduce the chances of illegal dwellings being built above garages. Now that coach houses are permitted, this is not as much of a concern. However, in this particular case, if the upstairs was later converted to a dwelling unit, it would be illegal due to the location and distance from a fire hydrant. Now, what I heard you just say was that it was the intention of the owner to develop that area. And so it's still, so how could he possibly do that if it is illegal?
Your worship, you shouldn't be answering those kinds of questions. That should be staff.
Yeah.
Okay, so...
Well, he can always, give him the option of deflecting them, Jim.
A coach house wouldn't be permitted there because of distance from fire hydrant. Mr. Berman knows that. That doesn't in any way restrict his ability to use it for himself. Staff's recommendation has nothing to do with the coach house aspect. It has to do with the size. You have set in your zoning regulations maximums for size and height for accessory buildings based on the, quote, "residential character." You don't, you're, as the senior planner's pointing out, you've made a choice in your zoning that says the house will dominate the accessory structure and not the other way around. And you've consistently applied it. Last year, early in the year, you denied Mr. Lokey, who was asking for almost identical to what Mr. Berman is asking for. About six months ago, Mr. Berman's neighbor, the exact property next door, asked for an oversized garage. You turned him down. If you're going to give this to Mr. Berman, please let me go back to his neighbor and let him have his.
So from my perspective, why I brought it back today was because I, it wasn't clear to me from the discussion that I heard from council that the reason for the decline was the coach house versus the overheight. And so for me, I didn't bring it back from the perspective of saying I'm in favor of it or opposed to it. It was just clarification for council's perspective. Councilor Jevakoff?
My reading of this recommendation is that it's strictly limited to the variance in height.
Yes.
It's not anything to do with the size of the structure.
Both your height and your square footage regulations are aimed at the same aspect as Senior Planner is saying. You're attempting to make that clear delineation between the accessory building and the main structure. So it doesn't matter if it gets exercised by going up or by going out. It can, it can, it can fall foul of your regulations either way. They're written both to prevent both, up or out.
Okay, well, my understanding is just strictly on height. And now, when I first got on council years ago, in my idealistic approach, this issue came up. There was a request for a variance in height, and I voted against it. The variance was approved. And I thought, "Well, you know, here's a standard for an area, and if you approve a variance and this building is going to be higher, it's going to..." it's going to make the whole neighborhood look ugly and all this. So, I kept watching it. Now, I've had about 15 years to watch it. You know, the variance was approved and it was the right thing to do. It has not affected the neighborhood a bit. It blends in, it was done in like nice finishes and everything. And I just don't see this as a problem. To me, we've got all kinds of limitations, standards that we apply through the development permit process, anticipating that there's going, that the landowner is going to be breaking the law in the future is not fair because that can apply to everybody, everywhere. I mean, it can apply, you know, we just don't proceed on the assumptions that somebody is going to break the law in the future. So, this is something that I think it's just, you know, I think it'll benefit the neighborhood in the, in the long run once it's built and, and it looks good. And so, I'll be supporting it.
Thank you. Consular Schuman?
Yeah, I'm not going to support it. I'm going to continue to base my decision on the fact that it will alter the neighborhood character. And so, I'll have to, I'll have to vote against the current motion.
Thank you. Further discussion, further questions? Consular Rogers?
I'll just reiterate what I had said at the last meeting. And your worship, you know, I brought up, well, maybe we should change that driveway. No, I'm not touching that. Well, that's what you're doing here. You're, you're, you're going to be changing what we had already decided when we went through the building bylaws and everything else. And it says right here, it doesn't, it doesn't meet our zoning bylaw. We have a recommendation from our senior planner. And I just look at, and if, if me sitting on the sidelines, you know, a year ago, saying to myself, look at council, they're changing their mind again, they're not sticking to their guns. Well, if you, if you, it's sooner or later, you've got to start making a decision and sticking with the decision and not changing your mind, not going against policy, not going against your own, own bylaws. And that's what we would be doing here. So, I'd be saying no.
Thank you. Further questions, further comments, discussion? For me, absolutely. The reason I brought it back was for clarity in the discussion and after meeting with Mr. Berman. I absolutely get the aspect of, we put a residential development committee in place. We put some structure in place to try to ensure how we guide our community in terms of density and suites and all of those components. But every once in a while, you get some situations that arise that are saying, and this is, and this is absolutely no reflection. Senior Planner's done exactly what we should. We put structure in place so that we make sure we guide the community. But there's also situations that occur that arise that you say, wait a minute, does that apply for this particular situation? And that's what we get elected to do. Consular Jevakoff?
I guess I'd submit that the, that the barn roof style building there would fit quite nicely. I think it would add to the, to the aesthetics of the neighborhood. And I just have to remind everybody that we did approve a variance. I mean, there's a reason for variances. You don't make a bylaw and it applies all over, everywhere, every day, to everything. And we did approve a variance on an apartment building just recently. It was in our, since we've been on council, down by the mall.
Logan.
Across from the mall. We actually approved a whole nother story on that building. So, there has been precedence. And like I say, the variance in our neighborhood, even though I voted against it, I look at it now and I thought, you know, I guess I voted against it because I was new on council. And, you know, I, I was idealistic. I mean, you develop bylaws and zoning and, and you figure, okay, this is going to apply across the board. There are no variances. And that was not the right thing to do.
Thank you. Further discussion? Ready for the question? All in favor, sorry, no, you can't speak, sorry, Daryl.
That was a question, do I not need to speak?
No, sorry. Unless, so I shouldn't say that, unless council gives...
Unanimous.
Unanimous approval.
I would be inclined to, like to hear, so I'll approve it.
Everybody in favor of hearing from Mr. Berman?
Sure.
Yep, go ahead, Daryl.
Yeah, okay, I guess everybody's seen the, seen the drawing and what I proposed then. When I started out with this garage, first of all, understanding property. I put the garage in the back and I do this over in the back, but there's a green space behind me. I have no access to my back, to my backyard. I do live on an oversized lot that's seven point some of an acre, seven point something of an acre. It's an oversized lot. I wanted to build a garage. And when we started looking at this garage, I was building a normal garage, just like everybody else. I was building a box. And then, when my wife and I started talking about this, we started talking about the roof and what this would look like. So, you guys know the corner, you know the location. And I'm going to put a box on there with a standing roof. I don't think that's what city council wants. So, I went out and I looked at it and I had engineer drawings put together. And I'm going to spend 15,000 more dollars on this garage to meet curb appeal and put a decent roof on it. When I put that roof on and put that investment into it, it just makes sense for me to be able to put additional space into it because of that investment. This is not driven, originally I said, okay, I got that space, I'll put together all of the, make it into a coach house, not knowing the bylaws around coach houses. Spent $1,200, engineer drawings, coach house, rather than to hear that that's not doable. So, I said, okay, great, I'll take a coach house. So, it was never my intention to put a coach house. I just wanted a garage. And I wanted a garage that was appealing to curb. You guys can turn this all down. I'm going to build a garage that are under your bylaws, but it's going to be a box. Do you guys want a box? Really? On that corner? That's all I wanted to put up there. Because I will build a garage, I will be building the bylaws here at council. Sorry, dear.
That's okay, Daryl.
But please understand where I'm coming from. I'm not trying to do anything different here. All I'm trying to do is make something that's appealing to all of you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further questions, comments? You ready for the question? All, sorry?
We're voting...
We're voting in favor to allow the variance. Ready for the question? All those in favor? Opposed? It's Carrie, thank you. Item 9.4. So, I want to bring up the, last week, we made the announcement about our 2015 Under 17 World Hockey Challenge. And so, this is appropriate today that we wore for our announcement last week. Mayor Ackerman and I proudly disclaim the announcement that the City of Dawson Creek and the City of Fort St. John would be, were successful in putting forward and being accepted for the bid for the Under 17 World Hockey Championship, World Hockey, I'm going to call it the championships. I don't know. And it's taking place, obviously, in the two communities, the end of October, early November. And I just, the work that we were, have had to go through by Barry and Ryan to get that bid secured, I think is just an unbelievable opportunity for our community. The background, and I'm going to give a little bit of detail for the community in terms of how it came about. We were approached, Barry was approached, obviously with his association with Hockey Canada to say, listen, there's an opportunity for you guys for the Under 17 Hockey Championship, Men's Hockey Championships. You guys put, put forward a world-class bid last year for the Women's Under 18 World Championships. Could you dust it off? Do you think you guys could pull this off? We need you to co-host it. And so, we went to work on it. Sent a letter of intent out, reached out to Fort St. John, obviously, first, and they were happy to consider it as well and in fact endorsed it. Now, we sent a letter out saying, yes, we can do it, yes, we will do it. And as a result of that, we were successfully given the nod to host this championships for our communities. So, it'll be four teams in each community in the round robin play. So, we'll have four teams at the Incanta Event Center playing. Fort St. John will have four teams playing. They'll do the crossovers. And then, the semifinal bronze medal game and the gold medal games will be at the Incanta Event Center. Will be televised live by TSN. The guys are gone to work now on our sponsorships and got good feedback already from different processes throughout that. And the opportunity at having this kind of an event demonstrating to the world and nationally and internationally that our community has the capacity to host world caliber events like this, I think, just sets us up. Obviously, for the future of having all kinds of opportunities. And so, the month of October, when we have three or four or 500 delegates into our community for the Rotary Conference and Commander Hatfield here is a guest speaker for two or three days. And shortly after that, we're going to have a World Hockey Championships. So, I just think it's just amazing opportunities for our community. And to have that world attention, you just couldn't pay enough for it. And so, we're really excited about the opportunity. And obviously, last week in Fort St. John, we made the announcement. And Fort St. John are equally pleased and happy to be co-hosting it. And so, it'll be a great time for our community and we'll be alive. And so, the, we got, they were giving us a complete set of jerseys for all the teams. There'll be three Canadian teams, the black, the red, the whites, a U.S. national team, Soviet national team, Russian national team, Sweden, Finland, and Czechoslovakia. And so, these sweaters will be proudly hung in the halls of City Hall.
The mayor gets to wear a Canadian jersey and staff has to hold up international.
Team red. So, we, so these will be up in our City Hall hanging proudly. And we will be underway now raising money for sponsorship and ticket sales and sponsorship agreements. And the feedback has been amazing to me already. I don't know if other members of council have had it, but people have been phoning in already saying, I booked my hotel room already, can I get, when can I get my tickets? And that's a cool thing.
Can you get all those guys to stand up with you up there?
Sure, yeah, let's come up front with the sweaters and let's get a picture of that. Yeah, that's a good idea. Yeah.
I think I knew you'd volunteer for something today, right?
That's right. Come on, Barry.
Squeeze in there.
Yeah.
How cool is that?
Smile!
How cool is that? Who would have ever believed, right, that we'd be in a situation to have Canada, Russia playing in our arena, maybe? Thanks, you guys, thank you.
Item 9.5, on Thursday, there was an announcement that, with our MP Bob Zimmer and MLA Bernier, that the City of Dawson Creek was successful in our Build Canada Small Communities application for funding for a new reservoir at the water treatment plant. We put forward a four and a half million dollar grant request through to the Build Canada Fund. We were formally given the nod on Thursday that the federal government are putting in 1.66 million, the provincial government putting in 1.66 million, and we'll be putting in 1.6 million to build a new water reservoir on the west edge of town. This reservoir, for clarity, is exactly the same reservoir system that we have on the north end of town. We just finished with Lorrain. We have the Park Hill Reservoir on the west edge of town. These reservoirs provide us with the backup to our system for distribution as well as adding to the pressure, it adds to the capacity for fire flow protection. So, in the event you have a significant event or fire or something where you need that immediacy of water supply, these reservoirs are where that supply comes from. And as our community is building and we're seeing the development take place on the west edge of town and now to the south, we've got the north end of town looked after with Lorrain. We needed to provide some additional infrastructure for the growth of the community for the future with this reservoir. And that's the first stage in the process that council's put forward. Following that, hopefully, we get this project completed. And next year, we'll start the work on the water treatment plant to increase the capacity of that treatment plant to also be able to ensure we've got the future capacity for the supply and for distribution of the water into our community in the coming years. And this, this piece here, to have four and a half million dollars of, of funding available that's not taxpayer borrowed, not being repaid by our residents, but absolute pure grant from the federal and provincial government, I think is an outstanding accomplishment for the city to be able to move forward and continue to build the infrastructure to allow our city to have the capacity of core infrastructure to grow and have that ability to ensure that we meet the needs of our residents and our community in the long term. So, it was a great Thursday to be able to get that. Consular McFadden?
Just a question, your worship. What's the timeframe for construction start and then having this reservoir commissioned and on life?
I hope, we'll have it done by August, I think, or September. We'll have it completed and built.
I don't think so, your worship. But there's a reasonable chance we'll have a tender, Lord. Sean, can you speak to that?
Sure, that, that would be the timing. We would like to seed that tender in early fall. Hope to have a shovel in the ground prior to frost, work into the winter as much as we can and completion in 2016.
Thank you.
That should be operationalized through next year. All the engineering and everything, that was the real cool part about it is we had to have engineering done in order to be able to put the grant proposal, the grant forward for request. So, all that's done now, it's just a request for proposal. Thanks, Sean. Anything further? Last week, or the week before, I can't remember which, there's a lot of water going under the bridge. They, we met with the elected officials from the County of Saddle Hills. I think Consular Schuman, Consular Parslow, Consular Rogers, Wilbur. Yep, no. Four of us met with three or four of the representatives from the County of Saddle Hills. We've had a couple of engagements with them. And, you know, to me, I reached out to them about a year and a half ago, just after I got elected because I thought, you know, we have a great relationships with our regional district, electoral area directors. So many of the people in the County of Saddle Hills, which is Bakery Bonanza, Savannah, Moonshine Lake, out that country, is all represented by the County of Saddle Hills. All those people, almost without exception, deal with and trade in the City of Dawson Creek. Kids go to school here, kids play hockey here, speed skate. They, they interact with our communities. And so, I just felt it was an important step for us to try to enhance and continue to build that relationship with them. So, I gave a presentation to them about a year ago and we committed we'd follow up. And so, we had a meeting here, a dinner meeting they invited us to. And we just had a great conversation about different things. And so, again, this, this came to the conversation and they're extremely interested in somehow getting a presentation from our staff on it, to be somehow get involved in it in a sponsorship or whatever. But they really liked the idea of partnering with us in the community. So, it was just very, very helpful. And we talked about all kinds of different things, like transportation, like water, like services and all those types of things. Great group of people and it was very worthwhile. So, we continue to look to build that even more soon. Anybody that was there have any other comments or...
No, you're taken.
That was good.
Yeah.
We knew most of them anyway.
Yeah. Yeah, it was really good.
We talked about agriculture.
And agriculture. Item 9.7, last, we had a dedication ceremony for Mr. Jens Liebkut at the Calvin Crook Center for the Performing Arts. Jens is a longtime resident of Dawson Creek years and years ago. Local businessman, came into the community, had the bakery in town and worked at the Safeway and was probably instrumental in getting the old Granby School transitioned into the Kuanas, or the Performing Arts Center at that time. And just a real gentleman, hasn't been home, back home for about 15 or 16 or 17 years. And so, they hung a picture of Jens and dedicated a spot on the wall at the Calvin Crook Center for the Performing Arts to Jens. He could, it's, it was really touching to see a guy who had put so much into our community over the years. over the years, to come home and feel that real support that he got from the folks there in the Kuanas. So, it was a fun, fun evening. Last Tuesday, we attended an event at the Calvin Crook Center with the Historical Society, who gave recognition to the Incanta Corporation, who donated four computers to the Historical Society to allow them to continue to do some of the work that they do on behalf of the community, and the archiving and that work at the Historical Society, and so, along with Councilor Parslow, and we attended that, and the Historical Society gave recognition to Incanta for their generous donation. And you know, what was amazing to me, you hear about things that go on in your community where somebody gives $10,000, or somebody gives $50,000 for a donation, and here's a group that were just over the moon, that they had donation of these four computers to be able to allow them to do the work volunteering on behalf of our community archiving, and it was, I know Incanta were really, the representatives from Incanta were really pleased about how much that was obviously meant to the Historical Society and the group. So it was really, sometimes it ain't the big stuff that you do that really can make a difference. Any questions? 98, well, last week, we attended the, I keep saying last week, but I'm sure it was probably longer than that. The Home and Agro Center, Co-op Home and Agro Center had their grand opening last weekend, it was, and so they had three days of opening their new store, and, you know, it really is an amazing addition to the retail sector of the community, and certainly to the building supply and home renovation folks, and what an amazing job they've done to that facility and that store, and, and really brought it into the big city supply world of having a world of that kind of a supply center. So I was really pleased to be there and represent council and express our appreciation for the work that the board, the members of the Co-op have put into continuing to help build the community, as they have for seventy or eighty or ninety years that the Co-op's been in operation. And the last one, last week, I attended the event at the college. They had a celebration on the National Aboriginal Day of June 21st, and so went and said a few words on behalf of council, and celebrated a couple hours with traditional dance and folks from the Aboriginal First Nations and Métis communities. So that was the couple of weeks in the life of the mayor. So with that, I want to go back to eight. We have bylaws, 8.1, we didn't complete the Waste Collection and Disposal Regulation Bylaw 4265 for adoption.
I moved that.
Moved, Councilor Schuman seconded, Councilor Rogers discussion. All in favor? Opposed? Carried. Thank you. Consent calendar?
Nothing new on the diary, worship.
Consent calendar? Councilor McFadden?
Moved.
Seconded, Councilor Schuman, discussion. All in favor? Opposed? Carried. Strategic priorities?
Just to remark that the World U-17 Hockey Challenge wasn't on the radar when you guys put together this strategic plan, but it's a large draw on staff resources, so we're going to have to reorder some of these other proposed completion dates.
Thank you.
Makes sense.
Question and answer period?
No, I signed up.
Media? Natalie? Johnny?
Just a fee for Jim.
Thank you. And so, we move to committee of the hall. Is Marcel in the house?
We'll go find him, your worship.
So we'll move to 15-2, report from the fire chief. Morning, chief.
Good morning. Good summer morning. So you have the report in front of you, there's nothing that's remarkable in there that, that I need to speak to, I guess? Any questions, concerns, comments?
Councilor McFadden?
Good morning, chief. What's, I notice on, I guess, the BC news that there's pretty much campfire burns and open pit burning everywhere in the province. Is that something we have in, in place now here in Dawson Creek?
We, up until, again, last week, or could've been the week before, there was a complete burn ban on, but it's been lifted due to the rains we've had. Now, I haven't seen anything official if it's been put back on or not, so, but every place around us has got some burn bans on.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything further for chief? Can you talk briefly, because I just saw an email that we exchanged very quickly on the CN Rail app? Are you familiar with?
The Ask Rail.
The Ask Rail?
Yeah, the Ask Rail is a, an application, and you can apply to have that app for your phone, and it's only invitation only, so it's for first responders, fire chiefs, and first responders that are going to be on scene. What it is, it's, it's developed so that if there's an incident with a rail car, we can use the app to find out what's not only on the rail car, but the entire train, so that depending on what hazardous goods or dangerous goods, or what other materials are on that train, we can plan accordingly. It's brand new, we have applied to, to have that app for all of our captains, our acting captains, our chief officers. I just got an email yesterday with a short video on how it's supposed to work, but I haven't got anything at this time on when we can download that app, so.
Yeah, I was at, when we were at the FCM, as a matter of fact, I saw the presentation that CN had done on it, and so I talked briefly to Jim about it, because I thought, what a great app for us to be able to have access to, to understand what's going on within your community on, or in any community with respect to rail, and identification of the goods, and what's on the train and stuff. I thought it was a great app.
Yeah, and the big thing of that one is, before, we'd always be able to get the car and what's in that particular car, but now we get the whole entire train, so we can plan accordingly.
They even said that there was a component in there, you could identify a car if it was empty, but what had been in it, so that, yeah, it just seemed like a great bit of information to be able to have available. Thanks.
Tool in the toolbox.
Yep, thank you. Anything further for chief? Thank you, chief. Director of Corporate Administration, 15-3?
Good morning.
Good morning, welcome.
Thank you. Nothing really to pull out, except we, I did miss including our community that was sent out to all the residents just last week, just updating everyone on the arena repairs, and it includes council's strategic plan as well, so that's for interest from all our citizens. Besides that, just wanted to say congratulations to the grads. We had two staff have their children graduate, Jim's daughter Becky, and Sabrina's son Isaiah. I've included a grad photo in our report, and if there's no questions, that's all.
Just a quick update on the Economic Development Advisory Committee, we did have a meeting with them, and?
Yeah, we did have a meeting on June 18th. Our committee is nine members strong at the moment, and just, it was basically just a wrap-up of the last year, what the mayor's been doing as the economic development officer, and we will be preparing a, a list of economic development tasks that we currently do, and I'll present that to council, and then we will be deciding if an economic development officer's in the queue or not for the next year.
The committee talked about the downtown facade improvement program, that joint funding opportunity that's available through Northern Development Initiative Trust, and we also talked about the small town love program that Council Wilbur's been working on with NDIT as well.
Yeah, I could mention a bit more about the small town love. They're planning on doing the launch during the car show. There's about thirty businesses involved at the moment, and it's open to more.
Thank you, Brenda. Thanks. Any question? Thank you. 15-4, we have a report from our chief financial officer. Good morning.
Good morning.
Welcome.
So the report in front of you is, basically just says we're pretty much at the end of last year's cycle, we have the audit completed, the budget completed, and we're just going to basically wrap up tax collection this week. I just want to remind all the residents of Dawson Creek to come in and pay their taxes before the due date, the end of the day, July 2nd, which is after Wednesday, the Canada Day. So please come in or drop off a postdated check, pay online, there's lots of options. If you don't make the deadline, you'll get a 10% penalty, which is not very good for anybody, so that's probably my most important message for today. And just moving forward, I'm getting really excited to move forward on the tangible capital asset plan that we had outlined a couple of years, and got a few months before we start the next cycle to work on that, so.
Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions?
Jim?
I'll just add on that 10%, that council has no authority to waive that, that's provincial legislation, so folks who miss the deadline, there's no outlet here, so really be a good idea to pay before the deadline.
Can I charge them to somebody else?
We'll give it a try.
By Councilor Rogers.
No, I don't think so, your worship.
You have to pay your own taxes, damn it.
Thank you, Shelley. Any questions, anything further? Thank you. 15-5, report from the Director of Infrastructure. Good morning.
Good morning, everybody.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Good morning.
So Chelsea Modashaw with us this morning, and she's going to give us an update on our watershed, our water release from last year, and where we're currently at in the watershed right now, how our last big rain affected everything, but I just have a couple of small things I wanted to touch on before we get into that. So I just wanted to reiterate what the mayor said in regards to the Build Canada Small Communities Grant Fund. Staff is very excited about that, and we plan to get started and working with consultants right away to get that project up and going and moving. It was a great news story. I wanted to quickly say that we did have a water line tender close just recently for 1,300 meters of loop line from the new Loran reservoir down to 21st Street. We did have some, some good bids on that, and we'll be moving that project forward and bringing something to council at the next meeting for you guys to look at. And lastly, our sewer upgrade tender did close as well at the same time. Unfortunately, bids received were, were over budget, so unfortunately, we will be canceling that tender for this year, and looking at it again, hopefully, in the near future. We had a million dollar budget for that project, and we ended up coming in anywhere from a million and a half dollars to two and a half million dollars.
Where was that for?
It was actually an upgrade in a re and re, which is a remove replacement of the old sewer line, 17th Street and 99th Avenue, heading west up in behind Reg Norman, coming out behind the old Joy propane, and up to the regional district.
Okay.
So that's what I had in regards to those. Actually, I think Chelsea's going to probably show us some live weir cams out of Bear Hole as well as Eris, so without further ado.
Tell you how you can look there, too.
Yeah, sure, turn it over to Chelsea here, who has lots of good information for you today.
For sure. So, good morning, everybody. I'm going to start with an update for the Bear Hole release that we did from last September, so September 2014 to March of 2015. So, we did a release last year, which I gave a bit of an overview of in March when I presented to council. I'm going to give you an update on it, because we've had consultants look at the number and kind of finalize how much we released and how much recharge. So, we started our release in September, beginning of September last year. We ran it for about, yeah, for sure, we ran it for about 182 days. During that time, we released around 618,000 cubic meters of water. So, we released that much water, we've done calculations and looked at evaporation losses, precipitation gains, and then determined our recharge from that. So we did a simple water balance equation, and we released approximately 618,000 cubes, we recharge around 726,000 cubes. So, the information that I gave to council prior, we recharge a certain amount, not only did we, or sorry, we released a certain amount, not only did we recharge that amount, we recharge even more. So, clear as mud? No.
Clear as water.
So, over 182 days, we released anywhere from 2,000 cubes of water a day to around 3,500, 4,500 cubes a day, but we recharge around 4,000 every day. We know that didn't come from precipitation in the form of rain, some of this can be attributed to snow and fresh air, as it recharged in March, but again, I think we're looking mostly at groundwater in that area. So, we're going to be completing our water balance on Bear Hole in 2015, so the end of this year, we'll have a report that will state, this is how much was released, this is how much rain fell, this is how much evaporation we have, this is the exact number of recharge we're getting it from, and then recommendations on how to move forward to look to how much the whole Bear Hole Lake area is contributing to groundwater, or sorry, to the lake level recharge. So, that's kind of where we're sitting on that. Bear Hole has been a fantastic release, every time we've done it, we've had recharge over and above what we've released. So, looking into this year, we've been keeping an eye on all different types of water levels, so I'll show you a couple. We're looking at groundwater levels, so Tumblr Ridge has a groundwater observation well that we can use, Bear Hole Lake is very close to Tumblr Ridge, so it indicates where we're sitting. We know that the Kiskatna watershed is mostly base, well, all the base flow comes in August, September, so when we hit low flows, the majority of that water's coming from groundwater, so having that observation well in Tumblr Ridge gives us an indication of regional groundwater trends. Since March of this year, we've seen groundwater levels rise about two and a half meters in the well, so we're still around minimum water levels when we talk about groundwater, but we're seeing higher water levels than 2014. So, where we're sitting now, higher than last year by about two and a half meters. So, what that's saying is that it's going to be able to sustain low flows for a longer period of time if we get the hot weather and kind of into that drier periods. Other things that we've been looking, or I have been looking at, is that we have been monitoring is Bear Hole Lake's water level. So, every morning, I go in and check out Bear Hole Lake. This is accessible to city staff, and if anybody is interested in getting accessibility to this, just let me know, and I can send out the link to it. So this is a weather station that is at Bear Hole Lake, and it gives us precipitation, wind speed, temperature, as well as water level, and it gives us photos three to four times a day, depending how much sunlight we get. So it's ran totally off solar power, and then we have cellular telemetry that gives us pictures. So, this is the main page, I go into photographs, and from photographs, I can actually see the weir as of 9:00 AM this morning. This is the weir we have out at Bear Hole Lake, so water level is topping the weir, it's been topping the weir since middle of April, and, which means lake level's fully recharged from how much we've released. It's about four centimeters over the weir right now, going back to that last rain we just had. We have to see here how much that rain impacted, so Bear Hole Lake got a lot more rain than we did. So, if we look, of course, it's, there we go. So this is June 18th, 19th it started, so we were at water levels just topping the weir, we were kind of looking like, okay, hopefully, we're going to get some rain, because right now, we're sitting about level, and, you know, it'd be really nice to get some rain in June and not have to worry so much about low flows. So we did get rain. We got so much rain that Bear Hole Lake's water level rose about 21 centimeters, so that was in three days, it rose 21 centimeters. At Eris, we had water flowing over the weir, we had about 40 centimeters going over the weir prior to that rain. Once that rain hit, we were up to 1.9 meters of weir. So our system is really responsive to these rains. So our system is really responsive to these rainstorms, which is fantastic. The thing to remember is that you're still always going to have the following line, right? If we're not getting more into the system and we have high heat, high temperatures, then we're gonna get more evaporation. So we're seeing the steady decline now, again, reaching over the weir. As I said, we're about four centimeters right now. It's not in a bad position at all. We're way better off than we were last year. This time last year, we weren't even flowing over. So in comparison to twenty fourteen, we're doing really good. Last year, we were looking at minimum flows or the lower quartile around this year. So we have crossed past median flows and we were heading towards minimum. This year at the Farmington Gage, we are above median flows. So just to give you an idea of where we're sitting. And then another thing we look at every day is we get. Sorry. Every morning, we get a water level at Eris. And this one's accessible for everybody. So you go to the Dawson Creek new webpage, which is very snazzy when it comes up.
Do you get the turbidity level as well?
They do get the turbidity level at Eris. We don't have a turbidity level at Bear Hole. We do take turbidity readings every time we do any work out there. Just because we're distributing the area, you know, for cleaning out the weir, whichever. But other than that.
But when we were getting the big rain, you wouldn't be able to pump to Eris, would you?
I'd have to look at the numbers.
We actually turned off Counselor Rogers for about four or five days until the water dropped enough that started to clear out the weir.
So if you wanna access the Eris Live feed, you go to the City of Dawson Creek's new page and you can click on the Water and Environmental tab here. And that'll take you right to anything you wanna know about water in the city. And then you just hit the Weir Live feed. And this will show us how much water's flowing over again.
At this exact moment.
Yeah, at this exact moment. So this one's real time. So again, if you're just wanting to look at what's happening out there, this is a good indication of it. So that's my update on where we're sitting water-wise in comparison to twenty fourteen. We're looking a lot stronger. Again, though, with the prolonged temperature, we're not gonna get any more inputs to our system through precipitation. I think it's gonna be really important to educate people again on our water conservation measures and the fact that, yes, we had rain, but it's important to manage and probably conserve it.
And last year, you should note, we never had to move beyond stage one water conservation measures. We're at stage one water conservation measures now. And it's important to note that that is not as a result of water shortage. That's because we want to preserve our pipes and our pumps. And you don't need to water your lawn more than two days a week for it to grow and our pumps can use the relief. So that's what conservation stage one is about.
Isn't that all mandated through the BC government as well for water conservation?
The BC government has a larger target and it has to do with reducing consumption overall. So that is consumption reduction, whether you have water shortage or not. So yes, stage one is partly aimed at meeting those targets.
Because a lot of people say, oh, you're, you're on, Dawson Creek's on water restrictions again. And I say, well, no, that's part of the BC government mandate, right?
Well, it's council who's made that determination in, partly in order to meet eventually set goals. But as I say, also partly because there's no need to strain your pumps and pipes so that people water every day when that doesn't help their lawn at all. And by the way, it especially doesn't help your lawn if you're watering right now. If you watered on the weekend when it was thirty-one above, you not only wasted the water, you harmed your grass. Don't do it. It's silly.
Absolutely.
Counselor Parslow?
Yes, thank you. This is one of those areas I like to know a lot about. I get all sorts of questions about this and a few other topics. So just help me, Chelsea. This two thousand fourteen fifteen Bear Hole Lake release, okay? Which, as I understand it, you know, it extended from September the fifth to March the fifth and there was daily release during that period of time, right? Okay? Previous year's releases, were they, were they done over such a long period of time or were they just a very sort of, let's release a large amount of water and see how much we get down at the weir? Was this a different pattern of release, a different type of test?
This was absolutely a different type of test. Yeah, it's, are you good? We actually were, we're closer to probably five weeks longer than what we had been in the past. And it was a result of the conditions that we were in last September. Normally, we don't get to that point in the river till October.
Yeah.
And we just experienced that, that much quicker last year because of the lack of moisture and the temperatures that we had. So we decided to initiate our trial earlier than we had in the past and it was very successful.
The secondary purpose of doing the release a bit earlier was to help get more information and data for the water balance study because if we're only doing releases in freeze-up and winter, we're not really getting an understanding of the recharge component during a dry period of time and how much Bear Hole Lake can actually produce for us. So that was another aspect of it.
Thank you. Any further questions? Jim?
Just a remark. You heard the Chief Financial Officer talk about your tangible capital assets register and what's going on in our next steps there. You have to keep in mind that Bear Hole Lake's not gonna show up on that register. Bear Hole Lake is a natural asset. It seems to be a magic natural asset. It rejuvenates itself. When you need water, you take it and it fills itself back up and then some. But it has an enormous value to us, although it doesn't show up on the books because it's a natural asset. And this is probably another phase down the line for our asset management. We know what it would cost to replace it with man-made because you've seen those figures. Where we would need twenty-five to thirty million to build similar capacity to store water and we'd have to pump water to it and it sure wouldn't rejuvenate itself when the water came out of it. So, you know, this is, this is a tens or twenty or even thirty million dollar asset that's sitting out there, natural, that we have the permitting to use as though it was our own constructed asset. It's enormously valuable to this community.
Thanks. Yeah, you know, honestly, to me, the more you try to understand this infrastructure and the water, the distribution, the treatment, the storage, all of that, I think the better we understand it, the better data we have to understand what that Bear Hole Lake as a reservoir does for our supply in the future and then how that impacts our distribution. I think is an amazing amount of information that's gonna be so valuable to our community in the coming years. The more we understand it, the better we understand it, the more valuable it becomes to us. Counselor Schum?
Chelsea, has there been any more information with regards to the community watershed business that we were trying to track down?
Yes, there has been. I was contacted by Valerie Cameron, which is the head water stewardship manager for the province. We will be receiving a written comment back as well. But it's a large topic, it could take a little bit of time to discuss. But where we're sitting right now, the Water Sustainability Act will be rolling out in twenty sixteen. With that act, there's new options of protection or, say, designation of different sorts that may be more beneficial to us than the previous routes that we had just tried to do through the Oil and Gas Activity Act and Forest Range and Practice Act. So right now, I am exploring those options with the Ministry of Environment employees. I'm part of the Northeast Water Strategy, which is a group, a collaborative group that's come together with different levels of government to talk about water for the whole Northeast. And one of the topics and one of the projects that they've identified as being something they need to work on is this part of designating certain sensitive areas and the Cascatain being kind of the driving force for that. So I presented it as an idea, it's been accepted and now we're working on it with a little working group to try and work towards what's the best type of designations for these areas. And unfortunately, until the Sustainability Act rolls out, it's tricky. We can work towards what we think might, like gathering all the data and making connections with different stakeholders and working with government to try and fulfill what we think we might need to fulfill to get designation once the act comes out. But we all know that things take time, so working on it.
Thank you. Counselor McFadden?
Good morning. You mentioned that Bear Hole and I think you said the Cascatain appear to be rejuvenated by groundwater. Is that you?
Yeah, so in twenty twelve, well, ten, twenty-ten to twenty-twelve, UNBC did a study where they looked at surface water and groundwater interactions. And they identified that approximately seventy, seventy-five percent of the Cascatain's flow is contributed by groundwater, especially during drought or dry periods of time. So that's where that information's came from. And we do see that, like, I was out driving in the watershed prior to the rain and you're seeing natural springs running off. Also, the high mineral content, the hardness of our water is another good indication.
And is there any indication that fracking has any impact, good or bad, on that groundwater source?
We don't have any of that information at this time.
Thank you.
Counselor Parslow, did you have a question?
Yeah, I did. Just the staff just shared earlier that we're gonna have a need for a special meeting next week. But I just wanna ask a general question. Did we have some bids for the art gallery work?
Yes, that will be one of the items that's for your approval next Tuesday.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything further? Thank you, guys. Thank you. Great information. I see Staff Sergeant Marcel Gabozan attended, so good morning. Marcel, welcome.
Worship and council. Okay, I'll give you a brief overview of the over last month. Month of May, and I've included some of June, I guess, because now we're the twenty-ninth. The new corporal that was supposed to come to Dawson Creek from the Lower Mainland, the, his arrival date's been pushed back to August first. There were some issues with possession date on the residence. So they're gonna be here now August first. His wife's also a member, so it's gonna benefit the detachment as well. Yes. The GIS vacant corporal position that was supposed to be filled July first has now been pushed back to August first. And so is the constable position that was left vacant with the departure of Constable Edwards. We can't make this move right now just because of operational obligations. Like, we're working on major files right now that requires our people to stay where they're at. So that's why we have to delay those moves. We're working on re-establishing the bike unit for the summer. We'll see where that goes, but we have two members trained right now in Dawson Creek. So we're hoping to have a presence during, like, special events, July first, the rodeo week. They can patrol the grounds and stuff like that. It's gonna be, it's not gonna be regular. It's gonna be on special events right now. That's all we can manage with the time being. We have Constable Stephanie Lang will be the new community policing slash municipal traffic member. Stephanie will be the contact person for request for police participation at various community events, red search duties, events such as the parade. And we have a paraded Puscoop as well on the first. So she's the goal person for those events. File-wise, the opera trend continues with nine hundred fifty-seven calls for the month of May alone as compared to seven hundred seventy-six in twenty fourteen for the same time. And as of June twenty-second last week, we had six hundred twelve calls so far for June. Mischief and break and enters are big, two of the leading causes for the increase. We've been working on two significant files in May where we investigated local known suspects, where a number of search warrants were executed, a large amount of firearms were seized again. And one of the investigations involved a number of criminal offenses ranging from break and enter, home invasion, sexual assault of a minor, and drug possession. The suspect is in custody and will remain custody for the foreseeable future. It's still in front of the courts. The other involved local suspect with ties to local organized crime. We did a search warrant at his residence and again, stolen firearms were recovered and he's also in custody for the time being. As of June seventeenth, we started, we got involved in a serious child pornography investigation. I don't know if you read the news release on this one. Local resident, he's in custody right now, he's remanded. And it's gonna require a large number of men hours to investigate. It's a big file. The evidence would suggest a number of underage victims. We've requested the assistance of the Integrated Child Exploitation Unit out of Vancouver to help us out with all the data in the computers, the searches, et cetera. We've already been warned that it's gonna be big. There's more than one victim. The male's been arrested and we're also reviewing the possible connection with the attempted child lary investigation back in late April, I think it was, at the Calvin Truck Center. That may be related, but we can't confirm it right now. That's about it. On the mental health side, we, we spent six hours in the month of May alone just at the psych ward at the Emerge. We've been assisting, on two occasions, we assisted the detachment just between here and Chetwick. I'm just going blank right now. Tumbler Ridge.
Tumbler Ridge.
On two of their cases where we met them halfway to complete the transport to the psych ward. That took some of our time. And we had one that kind of caused me concern, the fact that we were called simply to facilitate the movement of a non-violent committed patient. For what reason, I'm not sure. Like, there was no police requirement for this one. But we were contacted and two of our members had to go and spend like forty-five minutes just walking the person from Emerge to the psych ward. So I'm looking into this particular one. Yeah, that's about it so far.
Counselor Parslow?
Thank you. I got a few questions about your, your statistics. There must be some things I'm, that are missing from my mind about this because your total calls for service, May two thousand fifteen, nine-five-seven. You include in, when I tabulate that number, I don't get that number at all. So there must be some other things going on. I mean, I just, I just total all the individuals, the categories. And my number, when I was doing this this weekend, was, yeah, four-eighty-one. So you, you have nine-five-seven. So is there a whole series of small categories that are missing?
Yes, they all included. They're driven from the prime computer system. And we entered all the categories, like the, those mental health files, they're all included in this. Firecracker complaints, false alarm, they're all in there. Some have come to the front counter, they're added to it. And there's a whole range of files that all, they're all included into this one.
So over half of the files are not designated in the, in the categories here?
Yeah. But we still, we still spend the time to address those.
Yes.
And they're not all municipal, they're also provincial. They're all included into one. I can separate them from the provincial and municipal if you'd rather me to do that. But the overall calls for service, that's what it is in Dawson Creek.
Yeah, but, so four hundred and something of the calls for service are not listed here. That's what I'm getting at, right?
I can look into it. I can check with the person that's pulling those. I can look into it, I can check with the person that's pulling those stats for you, and I can have a breakdown of every single category if you want to.
No, I was just trying to understand the fact that when I tabulate the lists, I get four-eighty-one, and then I've got a total calls for service, nine-fifty-seven, so I thought to myself, well, there must be a whole bunch of police work.
The provincial side is probably not included on the four hundred that you're counting, but the overall is nine-hundred.
So is it fair for me to say that the four-eighty-one that I get from the individual is municipal police work?
Actually, I don't think so, because we've been through this before. What the Staff Sergeant can get me, and I can pass on to you all, there's sort of a miscellaneous category that doesn't show up here, but when I've seen the list before, there's all sorts of things. So, for instance, there's a report of a gunshot in the Willbrook Townhouse area on Saturday, I think, and I think there would have been seven or eight calls about that. It's not separated out here. It's still municipal, it's just not separated out here. It went in probably into a false alarm category, because no evidence developed that there was a gunshot, so all sorts of things like that. I've seen the total breakdown before, we can get that for you.
Well, we do have false alarms here, and we do have one-one-one.
These are like alarm alarms? I'm not, I'm saying somebody who called in about something, it turned out not to be happening.
They're not, they might not be scored as they come in, because once the member attends, he can't make a determination which are, whether or not it's substantiated or it's not, and then if it's not, then it's given as a separate category. It's a complex system, this computer system. It's not straightforward.
No.
But I can't break it down for you if you want.
So like, you know, data's very important, I believe in data-based decisions, right? And, you know, when I get four-eighty-one from the categorization that you have here, of which a hundred and fifty-eight are actual nine-one-one calls, are they then categorized, are they being double counted in the sense that a nine-one-one call might have been something to do with theft from a vehicle and that kicks? So I find the data confusing and therefore not very useful to me.
We will clarify.
Well, I don't wish to regenerate more.
No, we will, yeah.
Yeah, the, one of the reasons for keeping the categories you have is for the comparable. So that big miscellaneous category, you might want that broken down further, but you don't want to lose your existing categories because you don't, then you lose the comparable. And as the Staff Sergeant was just saying, not all calls are equal. So the one call about the, the initial call for service about the child, potential child pornography, it's going to lead to literally eighty to a hundred thousand dollars of staff time, one call. The call on the gunshot might have led to five hundred dollars worth.
Thank you. Anything further, Counselor Parslow?
No.
Counselor Rogers?
With all the guns that you're finding, do you guys have the proper carbines to protect yourselves?
No.
We have two carbines.
Two carbines, yeah.
Two carbines.
Is that enough?
We have two, two trained members on the carbine. No, it's not enough, and we have a big push trying to train as many as we can, it's just capacity. We need instructors to train those members, right? So we have, we have a seat on every course this summer, one member to go down and be trained. But if you have twenty-five members to train, and you only get one seat on every course, it'll take like eighteen months to two years to have all those members trained. Because we're not the only one, right? We're competing for space on those, because it's a priority of the commissioner, and, but now we're running into a problem where instructors are becoming an issue, because we don't have enough instructors to build the courses, so we can't have more courses.
Is there anything that us as a council or the city can do to help you guys out?
Now we get to talk about more men!
As far as the carbine, as far as the carbine course, no. No, it's still the issue of capacity.
Yeah, because I've been watching it all unfolding on the news, and I was, I was more curious to find out what kind of protection you guys have for yourselves, even though we're, you know, you're finding all of these guns and everything else, and it's just, it's kind of a scary situation for you guys.
Yeah, and now they're trying to, it's just as recent as last week, they're trying to drive the course into depot. So they receive the course at depot before they graduate?
Yeah.
At the training? But they're going to use instructors out in the field, they're going to be brought into depot for a week to train those members. So yet again, you're going to draw those instructors away from the operational side here to go into depot. So it's even, it's going to put more strain on, on the local training here, right? So it's not an easy solution, it's just, there's only so many you can train in a determined period of time. But we do have a member on every single course going into the fall rate.
Thank you. Anything further? Marcel, thank you. Appreciate you coming in this morning, and appreciate, obviously, the work of the folks that are out there doing this stuff for us.
Thank you.
Thank you. Fifteen-six, we have a report from the Director of Community Services. Good morning, Barry.
Good morning, your worship. You know, it's always difficult to follow that report. Just want to say that it was a month ago today that we started that sort of search out, and I want to thank council again for that opportunity to bring the U-seventeens to Dawson Creek and to Fort St. John. I think it's going to be an event we're going to talk about for a long time. For those councillors that remembered how long we, we worked on our U-eighteen bid and how long that process was, to get that accomplished in a month certainly was a lot of cool work, and appreciate the work out of our Fort St. John staff as well as we move forward. I'll bring a last update on that. Lots of information in the report, I have to say. Staff did a great job in pulling this together. A couple ideas I'd like to just share, some really interesting work being done by Megan, our arena programmer, in regards to looking at some great physical activity partnerships within the community, which I think are starting to reach out in the partnership way that we believe our recreation staff can reload our core services and to focus more on those partnership opportunities. One of those was a significant discussion, again, with, some may have seen the Pay It Back program that a couple gyms in town have worked through, and I think it's going to be a great program that Megan will eventually roll out to council for their consideration and approval. As well, Shontay has been dealing with some great data collection. The Framework for Recreation in Canada 2015 will provide us, again, an overview of how to reload our core services, to refocus on council's direction on where the business we should be in, and I believe that's going to be some exciting work being brought forward. Nationally, there's some amazing trends happening out there. They're hitting us directly in regards to obesity in children, needs for different programming for some of our seniors, and certainly trying to make it fair and equitable across, for those with disabilities. So lots of work going to come forward there. Summer programming is in full swing, a number of programs have filled up very quickly, and I believe those started as, today. So if there's any questions regarding that, I'll certainly get information forward for you. One of the things around the Kenboric I wanted to highlight was our recognition of the Life Saving Society as the highest participation in first aid programming in the community for 2014 in the category population less than twenty thousand is a significant reflection of our current staff and some of the leadership happening there today. I just wanted to highlight one interesting walking track number. The totals are up almost to seventy-five thousand, but interestingly, the total for the, for the, the last month was higher than the whole total for 2013. I think that's a significant stat for us as we move forward. That was the direction of council to, with the ice being in at the Incanas Center, to have more hours of operation. I think that's a very positive stat that we, we need to reflect on as we move into our next budget deliberations. I believe it's critical with the amount of winter time that we have and the difficulty for our seniors and our individual families to get out and to get to somewhere safe to walk, so that's a great number we'll be able to, to explore as well. Lots of activity, most council, no need to reflect, but some great work being done in the community around some of our sustainability work, the water fill station, the Bike to Work Week that Mel worked on, and access awareness barbecue, so there's some information there. And certainly, I want to thank staff for getting involved in the Careers Day at the South Peace School, and the work they did there in giving information on what we do every day, and the staff that assisted in that delivery of that. And finally, with those reports, a hundred and fifty-nine staff are fully trained on the Respect in the Workplace course. We have a few pockets that we're finishing up, the RCMP, council, and a few other pockets of areas that we believe if we can get that finished up here in the next month, we'll certainly close a great gap of discussion, level the playing field of how we move forward and some of our ways in dealing with the union and partnership with the union and our staff culture, for sure. Wanted to reflect on a couple key things not in the report but are quickly going to take up some time, and I think they're, they're critical. The Crescent View Park, there's going to be some spray going on this Thursday. I talked to Duncan this morning, we will look at doing a twofold sort of opportunity. We will put up a little information, I think we call it the little fingerboards up at the mailboxes to indicate that that's going to happen, but more so, we've got a couple really keen residents that are phoning, I would say, more than daily lately, looking to get some of the park work completed in the capital program, so we're going to take that opportunity with, with that passion to reach out to our residents that were participants in the first community consultation and show them what we have, what we have planned, and look to see if there's any additional thoughts before. I think it's critical in this large open space that the community has that opportunity to engage, and the reason that it is kind of cool is that one of these residents has come forward with some, some significant money they would like to donate to the park, so we need to work that through and how we can ensure that that is captured, and the enthusiasm seems to be rolling out to several of those neighbors within that community, especially on the perimeter of the park, so we'll look to that as well. We'll get that rolling this week. The arena project is rolling along quite well, the crews were in from train, and that, the plans are all ordered, and the startup meeting is tomorrow at the arena, and that's well under control, and so far, so good in that, we have not had any snags with that yet. And finally, updates around the U-seventeen, we'll be having a big meeting this Thursday in Fort St. John. We have an individual come forward in the community who is prepared to lead our U-eighteen chair position, and we'll be meeting with that individual, and then meeting with the Fort St. John representative Thursday to really ganchart the next four months, so it's going to happen very quickly, but we do believe we have a great handle on this, the work that Ryan has done and completed historically, what we have from the Incanas Center on the marketing side, our ability to reach out. I think the Facebook, Twitter, and Twitter, all those went out, and we reached through hockey, almost equally, Ryan hit as many as equally as the Hockey Canada site, so we have some power on that marketing side, so we'll look to maximizing that. We did receive some information this morning on the financial packaging side. Janet provided Shelley and I with some information this morning, we need to review and chat about. Janet gave us the overview. For those that remember, we did have a volunteer that stepped away or didn't meet that commitment last, and it came back to the city, and that was a great contribution, but Janet's laid it exactly out what we required for that support, and we'll make some decisions around that. Corporate drafting of letters, we meet with the region next Thursday for our pitch to the region. Corporate letters have already started in regards to some of our, I would say, some of those people that were making commitments early with us in the U-eighteen packaging side, and that's around the hotel side, the busing side, and certainly some of our corporate people we've been reaching out to, and your worship has been supporting us and helping us move some of those players along. We'll certainly have a huge strategic rollout as we move forward, but I, those numbers that we budget in the corporate side, I believe, are more than attainable and can be exceeded very quickly, because the most of our side of, say, ninety thousand dollars was pushing well into the sixty thousand was trade and in-kind, and we believe we're seeing that already, that those people will again step to, to help us. The significance of this is, is that it's, the U-seventeens are an easy sell when you saw the NHL draft this week, that both Connor McDavid and Eichel from the States both played in this tournament two years ago. Certainly won't hurt us when we're marketing out, and probably, as a Canadian, we can also utilize some of the Connor McDavid ads in our favor to promote this event. One of the key things that we said will be the Thursday meeting. We'll be working very closely, Wally and I, Ferris, the manager, the GM from Fort St. John, and I will be the key steering sides between Hockey Canada and liaison between the Hockey Canada contracts and the work between the cities, but certainly, once we get this up and running, the steering committee chairs will be fully responsible and accountable for what we need to get done. And as I said, these, these people that we've recruited are very good, they're, they're as good as I believe we can, we can have, and people are supporting, we've got a number of people that they're bringing forward with names already, so I'm very confident that we're, we're not just going to deliver, but we're going to knock this one right out. So I look forward to the week, and Counselor McFadden, you know that we'll be looking for you in the penalty box and any other help we can get. So any questions to that, specific to the U-seventeens, I believe we'll try and update as much as we can, but you just got to trust that we can carry this one and run with it.
Thanks, Barry. Any questions? Counselor Jabecca?
The consultant that we had to look at the sports facilities there back that we...
Brian.
Brian from Perk? Brian Johnston, yes.
In his report, I guess we've got a report now, a final?
Yes, what he provided, yes.
Yeah, I was just wondering if there's any support there or any indication of need for a field house?
I would probably say I'm not sure to what, I'd have to go back to that councillor to look at where he was directing some of those comments, but I know that he did meet with those members of the DC Athletic, I don't know the exact term, the Athletic Association, for some discussion, and he was prepared to provide them with some of the data, and I think he was sharing some of that, but I could follow up with that for sure.
Okay. Thanks, Barry. Anything further? Counselor Rogers?
Just goes back to the field house there for a second. I thought it was in the report that in the near future, there's going to be one required, or there should be one, but then I was, I was looking through the report there, and for your summer programs, you have track and field, but we don't have a track in town, like an actual running track outside or anything like that, do we?
No, that's more geared to the youth, and it's, for lack of a better term, track and field label, but it's more physical activity to some degrees, it might be short sprinting, some training, some very basic keeping of that physical activity level, more so than a true track and field program, councillor.
One other concern I had, you didn't seem to think it was, it was a concern, Barry, but May twenty-ninth, we had awarded the contract for the arenas to be repaired, but then I go, we're just having a meeting on June the thirty at the plan for it, so I just look at it and go, you know, if it was, if it was imperative that we get going, why has it taken a month to have a meeting?
No, they've had the full meeting, they were in, I believe, again, time passes for me, the last couple of weeks I've lost track, but they were in here relatively shortly with their whole crew in, and all of that preliminary work was completed. This is the startup meeting with those additional contract, and again, Duncan could refer, I could get some more information, but we're, yeah, this is just the actual, yes.
Thank you. Anything further?
Last comment, I just wanted to have, we, we received the Palmeroy Lodging, we, huge partnership with the Palmeroy Properties, they have now secured for us three hundred and fifteen rooms for those, two hundred and five, two hundred and ten were for the team's officials and Hockey Canada delegates, and a hundred and five of them were required for NHL scouts alone. So it's a significant contribution in regards to the room numbers, but a hundred and five, they asked, actually asked for a hundred to a hundred and twenty rooms for NHL scouts alone.
They might have to share.
Counselor Parslow?
Yeah, well, you just, that, that comment just spawned something I was wondering about, so I'm going to ask it now. Port Alberni was the first community in British Columbia to host this tournament. We're the, we're the second with the Fort St. John. So given what you've just shared, well, how did, I was kind of, how did Port Alberni manage to pull it off? Because they, I'm just thinking about the capacity of that community, and I know it fairly well.
The history of the U-seventeens, it's like anything, when you make something successful, it continues to grow. I reflected back in nineteen ninety-nine when I had Canada, Russia, Finland, Switzerland, and Canora for pre, six pre-world junior games, and it sold for a hundred thousand dollars. Each one of those games today would fill an NHL arena, and Jim can attest, because he knows the CEO there quite well, is that once it left Port Alberni, it left the small community, because the CHL, the Canadian Hockey League, understood that it grew, and Port Alberni...
From eight teams, for instance, from six.
Yeah, yeah, and the profits there, and the CHL moved it from, because that was asked at the Fort St. John council, why couldn't we host, because the TSN broadcast was... Because the TSN broadcast was in a similar arena like our memorial. It went from that to basically the Winnipeg arena where they put 11,000 people in. This is a large CHL event and it should have and would have, and as you see in the press releases, going to Sault Ste. Marie next year. All of them are now in large CHL, which is the Canadian Hockey League major communities.
Thank you.
We're very lucky.
We're so lucky.
Thank you.
We're very lucky.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay.
15:07, we have Director of Development Services. Good morning Kevin.
Good morning. I'll give you a little update on what's going on in the department. This is time of year that everybody's pretty much flat out building department. Things are taken off, although we're a little bit behind last year. Still busy. We see lots of, lots of activity, lots of permits, some smaller stuff, lots of garages, renovations, but still keeping everybody moving at a pretty good clip. This is a really busy period of time for bylaw as well. As you can imagine with the rains we've had and now the warm weather, tall grass and weed complaints, issues around that is, it's prime growing season for that. So, I know chatting with them that that's been keeping them hopping for the last couple of weeks and will continue as they follow up and ensure and cut and do all of those Engineering department, again, this is the time of year when everything seems to happen, so busy with reviewing subdivision, you know, applications, various capital works programs. We've got two underway right now, maybe three. We've got a couple of sidewalks projects started on 14th Street, 102 to Alaska, the other 14th Street, which is up 94, 95th Avenue area. They've started work down at the parking lot expansion, north side of the pool, so those are underway. And then just a number of other projects, water sewer related items. And then, of course, it is that time of year when everybody in the community is busy, so we get a lot of requests, infrastructure related requests. So, those guys are, they're hopping and working six or seven days a week right now, so they're One thing I wanted to touch on was just some of the strategic priorities. Sewer DCCs, we had open house, we held on May 29th here in council chambers. We had a couple developers attend, very few comments. We've since taken the bylaw package and sent that off to the ministry for their review. So, all we've heard back from them to date is that they have a fairly high workload and that it will take a bit of time for them to get through it, but it's in the queue, so that's good news. Automated waste collection program, we heard a little bit about that today from one of our delegations. Bylaw, that was for adoption today?
Yes, it was.
Okay. So, we've got those changes in place. We've got the containers ordered. They will be showing up next couple of weeks, I believe, and will be stored out at Public Works and then there'll be an implementation closer to, or a delivery of the containers closer to full implementation of it. And right now, what we're hearing is the Key Cog in the Wheel is the new truck that Waste Management has ordered and that looks like that's going to arrive sometime in September. They're saying probably mid-September, so we're kind of targeting mid to late September as full implementation. So, we've, we'll be putting up this week some information on the website, some FAQs, and that's just the start of a bit of an information process that we'll get out to residents. We'll also be looking at putting things out in the August, September utility bills, more information on the transition, so that's coming along.
Just one question around that. So, the delegation this morning was speaking to the fact that, you know, we do have a two-bag limit in effect right now, yet, you know, eight or 10 bags can get picked up because our guy's very accommodating. Once we move to full implementation of the new waste carts, any garbage not in that container will be left behind? Is that, is that how it's going to work or will it be the same? Jason will then start hefting it in there with his...
No, my understanding and our wish, our bylaw, our beliefs will be that if it's not in the container, it's not to be picked up and that's a conversation I have had with Waste Management and then if need be, we will have. Again, my understanding as well as I suspect that the truck is equipped, that it has the arm and is dumped up higher and maybe there's simply not the ability for someone to grab bags and throw it in, but all the discussions we've had with Waste Management is that if it's not in the cart, it's not to be picked up.
Thanks.
A couple of RFP awards to note in here, road condition assessment. We awarded that to Tetra Tech, company out of Lower Mainland. They will be coming and doing a surface assessment of all the roads in town. What they have is a, basically a van equipped with GPS, number of sensors, cameras. They will travel all the streets, they record all the defects and all the locations and that all gets compiled into a database, gets integrated into our GIS system and that will then update our 2003 assessment that we had done and will help us guide our future capital program on that. All ties in nicely with master transportation plan and all those items. The other item was the 10th Street Bridge Assessment, something we've been looking at for the last couple of years and finally decided that we needed to have somebody come in and take a good look at the structure. We really haven't had a full, complete assessment of that bridge to understand, you know, just where that asset sits as far as its life cycle. So, we want, firstly, we want to look at where it's at today. We also want to look at options moving forward into the future, you know, when, when that asset expires, how do we replace it? What do we replace it with? What a budget like that might look like? So, that's another piece of work we'll have down here this summer. And the last thing, just touch on, the mayor brought up earlier about the road safety audit. I've compiled the terms of reference, I've shared with the two other parties, the Ministry of Transportation and ICBC for comments, I've received some back, so we're just finalizing a terms of reference that we can then in turn put out, I'm hoping in the next two to four weeks to look for a consulting company that can come in and do that work, so.
Great.
So, any questions?
Thanks Kevin. Any questions? Councillor Jabecca?
That 3M group, was that a local engineering firm?
No, MMM is a company, again, out of the Lower Mainland and they specialize in bridge. They have a whole division that does bridge assessments, bridge inspections. And when we went through the assessment, they just were really head and shoulders above pretty much everybody else in the group.
How long does it take to do the assessment?
The actual bridge assessment itself? They'll be up in the community probably for about a week and they'll be doing some non-destructive testing on it and pictures and various tests and...
Councillor Jabecca, you had another question?
The LAS projects, are they, the deadline is still down the road or...
Yeah, that's a good question.
July 6th.
Sorry?
July 6th.
July 6th is the deadline.
July 6th.
Yeah, so we'll know, know then.
Thanks Kevin, anything else? We just had the announcement, Canada Post, and so they'll be starting their process with us to identify locations for their neighborhood mailboxes and things now and so that will be...
Yes, I did, Nigel and myself met with Canada Post representatives last week and they're in looking at transitioning from door-to-door to community mailboxes. They will be providing us some proposed locations in the next month, month and a half for our review and comments with plans of planning through the winter and implementation in 2016.
And for us, it's about access, it's about snow removal, it's about all those things, parking, all those things.
Yeah.
Thanks Kevin.
You bet.
Anything further? Thank you.
Okay.
Appreciate it. So, now I think that takes us to the end of our presentations from our committee of the whole. With councillor Parslow, that's got a number of items that we're going to present on. Do you want to take a quick five-minute break before we do that? And how is our time for what we're going to do for now? We're not going to get done before lunch?
No, so we've ordered lunch in.
Okay. Perfect. So, we are, we'll take a five-minute break and then Charlie, do your thing.
This is...
Seven-minute break?
Yes.
But it may be zoned that way.
Well, the opportunity to share some information from going to a conference is good.
So, we need that screen down, George.
Oh, sorry.
Oh, yes, you need the screen down. You know, we've often talked about council tabling affordable housing and do I just press a button, Jim, for this?
No, what? I don't know.
Oh, she's got a tear. So, affordable housing is something that, you know, talking about what can we do to help people, low incomes or first home buyers, or a strategy for attracting professionals to be able to relocate here. And so, I've got four handouts that I'm going to refer to in a moment and there are four little video clips. I went on a workshop on Sunday, I believe, of the conference and it was quite interesting. Now, I don't, I want to be clear, I'm not advocating in any way that the city should do what Edmonton's doing. In fact, I don't think we need to have the capacity or the mandate, but I want you to be aware of what's going on there because I think you've talked about this, possibly, you know, we can facilitate, enable getting partnerships or maybe there's some ideas here that if we add a nonprofit housing society in the community, or that maybe there's an existing group who could take that on. So, there are four, four short video clips and I want to see if this thing will work for me.
Oops. No, not sorry.
So, this is, oops, what's happened in here? There you are. So, sec, this is a little clip of our secondary suites.
Welcome to Oxford, the city of Edmonton's newest innovative and sustainable community. This neighborhood will be stylish and comfortable with homes designed to higher environmental standards. Located just south of 167th Avenue and west of 130th Street in northwest Edmonton, Oxford is close to shopping, services and public transit. Easy access to the Anthony Handay and main commuter roads. Homes in this new phase of Oxford will be a natural extension of many of the city's strategic plans. The way we grow, the way we green and the way we live. The city had a vision, had a vision about secondary suites. They had a vision that they wanted to see a very friendly home as far as the environment goes, not only today, how we build it, but also for the future. Nothing works unless someone can build it and private enterprise is the one that can deliver the goods in that area. So, private enterprise, the builder and works with the community, with the city to create a successful environment.
Notice the driveway?
To get people to successfully buy the house. Income source from the basement that offsets some of the investment costs they're going to make, so it creates the income stream, it creates a green environment and also uses land in an effective way to make the neighborhood a better place. What they did is they invited the private sector to get involved with them. They did their homework, put together a plan and the end result is that they turned a Secondary suites typically, they're built in rental projects in existing homes, but this concept here, we're doing it right from the ground up. This particular project started with brand-new homes and therefore they could design it right from drawings right up to the finished product. So, they added a self-contained garage for the basement suite. They had additional height in the basement so that there's lots of ceiling height. The windows are well buffeted so that there's lots of natural light within the suite. And if one were to, you know, view one of these suites, you wouldn't know you weren't in a main residence. You get an independent entry for each homeowner here on parking stall. They're completely separated from one to the other, so it's just your own living space. When you purchase one of these homes, you're guaranteed that there has been permits taken out through development permits and inspectors have come out and checked the condition of the suite and picked up the suite from start to finish. So, there you're getting a legal complying suite with all the minimum regulations that the province and the city have on secondary suites. Having a secondary suite at a lower level helps the person who owns the home to make their mortgage payments. Would this type of housing, CBC, takes into account your rental income from the basement suite in order to supplement your qualification in order to get approved for your mortgage? I think some of the real benefits of this program is the fact that, you know, within the space where one family used to live, now you can have two families and the infrastructure is not impacted at all, we're just in the same streets with sewers, transportation systems, so it's a win-win for everybody. The grant is great, it allows us to afford a house that we probably wouldn't have been able to afford without the partial grant. All the feedback that we've gotten so far is he is more than ecstatic and for him to move into a brand-new basement suite adds what he can get charged is great for him. I really like the fact that after the grant program is over, I can decide whether to keep tenants or I can keep the whole house for myself and expand. Okay. The Cornerstones project program has a lot of initiatives, but one of the strings on the program is to deal with secondary suites. And the program will give in the form of a forgivable loan, up to $20,000, to the owner of a secondary suite. When you build a new home and plan for a secondary suite or basement suite within a home, 100% of it can go towards the down payment of the home. And 50% of the realized rent from the suite can be used as a mortgage qualifier. All you have to do is offer up the suite to qualify and down tenants for five years and then at the end of the five years, the loan is forgiven and the suite ensures to do whatever you want. Well, first of all, it's important that residential development is in all single family and you can combine some single family concepts with our Cornerstones project, which is the secondary suites. Makes us think about what we want our neighborhood to look like and I think it's a great project. The Oxford Green Building Incentive Program is about pushing builders to build above and beyond the minimum requirement that are valued at 78, you know, by providing a financial incentive between $1,000 and $7,000. This helps them with the premium that's associated with building to that higher standard. Basement Go Green is a flexible and affordable way in order to get energy-efficient spaces in houses. So, it tells you how energy-efficient the actual model plan is as well as a checklist system for technology to be put into the home that's in more energy-efficient capacity projects. And these homes here, basically, we're running two phases. That gives you two zones of control, so each floor has their own control over there, how much heat they use, which will then drastically reduce heating and cooling in the house. There's hall water on demand, that's running through the whole house. All appliances need to be energy-star appliances, so we have an energy-star appliance package for it. All toilets have to be low-flow, not too... All toilets have to be low-flow, not too flush toilets. So everything, right down to simple things like, you have a compact restroom, lights throughout the entire house. Measurable sustainability is about setting green criteria and then verifying that the home will meet that criteria. And we've done that through using third-party rating systems such as LEED and BuildGreen and the Energive for Homes program. Our initial customers have said this is a phenomenal idea. Gives us the ability to live in an insured neighborhood, gives us the ability to have a extremely well-built home. Most importantly, it helps us to pay some charges.
For like, the quality and everything, I think it is affordable, so it is pretty valuable for how much money you pay. Plus, this is in a very good location, it's kind of in the central area. So overall, I'm really happy with it.
We envisioned a community that we can bring in more people and still maintain the property values, maintain a safe neighborhood to live in, and promote growth within the community.
I think this is the kind of project that opens doors for better neighborhoods, more opportunity for people to buy houses and for people to live in a very friendly and eco-assented apartment. It's a win-win-win-win situation, which is always really good.
Take the legacy point down, CA.
Just a few comments there, maybe some points you missed, and you may have some questions. So this is just one project of Cornerstones. You notice that here we have a new home. We have, it's purposely built with a suite. And if you build that suite and you commit to renting that suite to a low-income person, you will be given a $20,000 grant from the city of Edmonton. And it is, if you commit for a low-income person living in that suite for five years, that $20,000 is forgiven. So the other part of it, of course, is half of the rental income is applicable for CNHC loan. And what you've got there is there's the handout of what is the maximum income level. So the city of Edmonton, you see this little sheet here? They have a qualifying. You must have an income as a strong person, right? Let's say the threshold, $33,517 for one person. That must be your income, that's the highest it could be. So if you have a low-income person using that rent, using that suite, then you might say, well, what is the rent they pay? Well, the pay, the rent is 85 or 80%, I forget which now, 80 to 85% of the market rate in that part of Edmonton. So the city of Edmonton as well, working with other government agencies, establishes what the market rate is in the preceding year, and that is applied to the following year. And it's, you can't charge any more than 85%, if maybe 80% of that market rate. So this is a way of providing quality accommodation for some below-income people. So this is just one. I want to move on to, unless there's any questions about that one. Oh, you've also got a package that has the application process. There's two application processes. This one I just showed you is a new home, so there's an application process. But this same grant thing applies for, if you wanted to put a suite into an older home, okay? Or build a suite into a garage. So the $20,000 forgivable applies for, in this case, new homes, in cases that I didn't see in older homes. And so that is just another option. So let's just move on. To another short video, another aspect of the Cornerstone project. This is first-time homeowners. So now, as you think, just think about doctors.
Something happens when you've had a home or owned a home in Edmonton before, and this program's a big deal. It's because it's a certain opportunity to introduce new housing choices for first-hand buyers and have them with areas of gravity. They do both the program and the benefit of referring the land cost. That's the first five years of the program that allows them to come in and be able to buy a house that they might otherwise be able to, and then to pick up that cost for the land when their income's in periods.
I think everyone is an ideal client as long as it's their first home. You see a lot of people, a lot of doctors, a lot of nurses, a lot of people that have just finished school in engineering or all kinds of field. But at the same time, we also see a few opportunities around the community, and we love to see that.
Right now, we use a small-townhouse product and a dry-lathered townhouse product. And they're great, they're both 1,800 to 1,500 square feet, perfect for your boundaries. They start out in vacant space, and they integrate well into the communities. They have a very high level of ownership, very high buyers, and it's a very secure product.
The benefit from the young families coming back is that these volunteers give to community associations, being active in the schools, bringing in children into the community.
Well, I think that's a certain opportunity for the First Place project, as we're required to engage every community on the design of the new homes. Every design is the result of a three-month engagement process, where six to eight residents that work with the city and the builders make sure that it all fits in their neighborhood.
It supports the infrastructure, such as schools, rec. centers, and parks, that are already a place that they're paid for, and keeps those communities going for the long term. A lot of these families are coming from their homes, and their parents' homes, that where they grew up in these neighborhoods. So the parents are still there, and they get support from their family and their friends and their neighbors. And it creates a more, it's a very friendly community environment that helps each other.
All the services that you could possibly want are in the community. I think the biggest benefit of living in an established community is that the schools, all the amenities are already built.
Transportation, definitely.
Is that sense of, you really feel that you know your neighborhood, you know what's going on, you know that the neighborhood is there to help and support you?
I love so many things about it. I love that it's made of green. I love that it's got a beautiful kitchen. I'm really excited to set, I have a little bit of unfinished work for it. Have plenty of room for people to come and stay with me. I love having people over. It's a place where I can host friends and my family when they come from out of town.
The love of the features in my home, I get. My own bathroom, I do not have to share a bathroom with my daughter. She is going to have a bathroom when she's a teenager, and I do not have to deal with it. Also having laundry on the second floor, such a great experience. It was so quick, easy, and it was wonderful.
My home buying experience with First Place has been tremendously positive.
Excellent. Yeah, that's been really helpful, and it's been great, and explaining how everything works. And I'm really pleased with it.
I definitely recommend the First Place program to the buyers.
I have actually already recommended the First Place program to others. I've told many of my friends, go and take a look at this and see what future developments are happening.
The First Place project I visited was to a school, a school site. Now, in Edmonton, you know, we have a separate school board and a public school board. And just like Dawson Creek, they also seem to have a lot of their school sites associated with a park. In this particular project, the separate school system had built a school. The public school had not, public system had not built a school. It was vacant. And then there was a city park. So I just immediately got very interested in this one, thinking about grandy, although we know we've got a school, an old school there. So what doesn't come across here is this. And the price, by the way, of those townhouses, the ones that I went to, are just absolutely finished, just beautifully finished. And the notice that the design of those things was done, they're privately sexually built, but there's a community group that advises and has input about the design to make sure it fits in with the community. But what this, the first, the First Place program, how that operates is you've got these townhouses, and they are on a part of land. The land is appraised in the project I saw for $34,000. The townhouses sell for about $270,000, $280,000. But that does not include the land component. If you are a first-time homeowner, you just pay the developer the cost of the house. The land component is deferred. You do not have to pay the $34,000 for five years, as long as you are the owner, occupier, and you live there for five years. After five years, you thus then start to pay the $34,000 back to the city, but at no interest. So this reduces the initial mortgage costs that enables people, maybe, who need cash for other things, that right out of university. The place I went to, there were three doctors, right out of university, a couple of nurses, and rest were into the trades, but they were all first-time homeowners. So they didn't, that $34,000, which would be about 12% or 15% of the total cost, was deferred for five years. So that was how that enabled beginning homeowners to get it. So just another aha, destroying the memory map.
Yes, the first-time properties, do they also have suites?
No.
Those suites?
No. So I've shown you one where there's detached homes intentionally designed and built with a suite. And if you build a suite and you lease it, rent it out to a low-income person, doesn't have to be the same person for five years, but for five years it's available and rented, you get $20,000 in outright grant. This one is a deferred land cost.
So Charlie, if, so say somebody bought it, bought the home, the land cost is deferred, and then after five years they were to sell it, do they, are they obligated to sell it to a first-home buyer?
I don't know that.
Yes, is the answer. So, Counselor, apparently I've read the stuff Counselor Parslow gave me more carefully than he read it itself. They're anti-speculation. So all of these programs, they're not anti-investment. You can purchase a home as a rental, but if the home changes hands in the first 20 years, you have to repay the full amount that you've been given, either in deferment or in cash grant. It's to discourage speculation.
Okay, and then, so when it's sold, it goes to another new home buyer, it can't be...
No, on the, on this program and on the other, what happens is it's registered as a covenant on title, that if it changes hands again in 20 years, the city gets all the money they gave you back. You have to commit to owning the thing for 20 years to get into this program.
Oh.
For the...
Well, for the, for the suites, for the $20,000 grant. You have to do that. For the $7,000 in green grants, you have to do that. I'm not 100% certain about this one.
Okay. Now, these homes are built, I think they're the 85 rating for the homes. They're very, very high-energy efficient green homes. So this is, this is an interesting thing, the, how they're, the private sector are building such
So much for the carpet.
I was gonna say.
No, it's cool.
So sweet, I haven't worn this.
They just took the craft out of the train. How long is green smell?
Yes, there somewhere?
So those townhouses were built this way?
Like modular units?
Pre-built, pre-built.
Pre, yeah, pre-built and assembled.
Like, like up on the ranch?
Actually, like many, many, like I lived in a Nelson home. It was very common in the 60s to do, you ordered your home from Sears. It came all built, you just assembled it.
My neighbor Brad Wall, he has his house built that way, at that deal, so. That shop that's just out of town there, they work a lot for Hydro. But that was pre-manufactured. Yeah, like all the walls and everything just showed up, and they just stood there.
The one beside Swamp Doggy there? Arctic. Arctic, how Arctic? The one, well, you mean one right by the golf course there?
At the golf course, yeah. The guy was from Abbesburg, and said, how can you actually do that and make any money? Why don't we just build the walls in our factory? And I said, well, you could build them right here on the floor.
I bet the machine doesn't get coffee breaks.
I bet not. Don't belong to a junior.
Bet it doesn't miss a forge rice either.
But look at the...
Got some squeaking going on in the house?
No, it's been good, man. $100 bucks now, for the minimum, maybe. More than that, maybe. Be more for a bigger one, yeah.
They had six guys running around.
Well, just set the roof on top.
Well, that home, it'd sell at about $500,000, part of Edmonton's mortgage debt. Now, this last, the video clip, oops, how do I stop that?
Just push down.
On this episode of...
One person.
That's a one.
Welcome to Sheraton Road to Hope. I'm your host, Neil Cate.
The two basic needs.
This last aspect of this Cornerstone is very interesting as well. This, this last aspect of this cornerstone is, is very interesting as well. So, as I remember, the presenter said to us that there are twenty-seven thousand people looking for homes in Edmonton. There's so many thousands of street people. And so this program is designed to keep low-income people, people with real financial problems, from going, being evicted or happy to leave their home because it's condemned. It's about giving some of these unfortunate people some hope, that they can stay in their home and rather than being forced out on the streets. So this was interesting.
Especially when they come down, I cannot sleep. When I come downstairs in winter time, most of the time, I keep my ankle here, it was water all the time. It was so stressful because I have, have to, and I didn't want to do it anymore. This is me, I have to work hard, earn it and do something, not ask for, I never did. It was hard for me to ask for Dennis Lee, but when I call him, he can take it's. He's knowledgeable about anything, he's very kind, he knows his job. And he will explain to you what to come, what, and he will come down, it's okay, it's fixable. It's true.
Dennis has seen it all, everything from homes on the verge of being condemned, to families in desperate need of getting their homes financially secure, especially those that are on a fixed income, like single mother of two, Rebecca.
It's ten degrees in my bedroom and my office in the winter.
Supporting two boys on a minimal income, Rebecca is trying to provide a secure home for her sons, owing with rising electrical and heating costs. It made for difficult winters for her family.
My gas bill is probably three hundred and fifty dollars, and it's gone to five hundred last winter, so it's just a weight off my shoulders, just knowing instead of having to do it over fifteen or twenty years, I can compress that, perhaps get everything done in five or ten years. So as soon as you get renovations done, unless deterioration happens, it's probably one of the big purposes of the program, have the city healthy of this rate.
Thanks to the whole program, Rebecca and her boys' home will now be able to withstand an Edmonton winter.
We did have one client that was on the verge of homelessness. Her host was a liberal, put to the back, that social services was ready to pay her children a return. And we made it livable for her. That's one person that could have been on to you now.
Not knowing where to turn, embarrassed or nervous for their future is how Dennis first finds potential program members.
It's crazy to death in the, in the home. Yeah, when I told you I was into it, I said, "I don't think about this program, but tell me both."
We have a lot of elderly clients as well, and it is so much more cost-effective to stay in their homes than to be in a nursing home.
I grew up here. My parents got involved here like here, and it's, I'm going to retire comfortably. I had to retire for disability a few years ago. I was horrified, what is that, though? To write your goal on these businesses and stuff, you don't know.
With home renovations being the trigger for confusion, Dennis works as a guide for the entire process, from inspection to assisting with contractors, so seniors feel comfortable and secure with their home decisions.
It's wonderful to know that the city is taking care of people that can't wait for the bill for major stuff like this. It really helps, and it's important.
It's been a wonderful experience, I really enjoy working with the program. Some people don't stand for it.
I love my house, and I'd gladly stay here forever. I'm excited. I'm really excited. Guys, thank you.
I love my job. It's a great deal, it really is.
I've got to hand out on the information gap, the application process for that. Okay, just like Jill referred to the other, there's a twenty-year commitment on behalf of the homeowners. But the, all the procedures, the program details are here. So I'm just offering this as, hey, these are things that Edmonton's doing, storing your memory bank. If we ever, you know, move forward with one of the opportunities over there at Grandview site, or if there's, working with some existing societies like Dawson Creek Society, we are living, has a lot of other ideas we can plant with them, are there other organizations? And that's one of the reasons why we talked about meeting with Minister Coleman was, about opportunities of dealing with low-income, new professionals, transitions. So that's for you to store your memory bank. So that was one, I think he was asleep Sunday afternoon. Enjoy it.
Thank you. Thanks Charlie, that was really interesting. I was breezing through some of it and I, when you look at the suites and they, some of the definition, they put on suite sizes and I-
Yeah, that's what I was looking at.
I was looking at saying forty percent of the building size, where they maxed it at seven hundred and fifty-three square feet for the suites. So it was interesting when you start to see that, how some of the decisions that we made and how we, but, but to me, to look at some of the opportunities that could be created and having some available options, that's, that's really good information.
Yeah, it's just, I thought it was good. Of course, you know, as has been said before, you, you spend a lot of time talking to other councillors and to mayors and on this particular tour, I asked questions about parking, you know. And I remember lady from, councillor from Drayton Valley, you know, for every suite there must be two parking stalls in Drayton Valley. Yeah. Little snippets like that.
Thank you Charlie.
Yeah, you're welcome.
So, do you have a question councillor Rogers?
I just, I just noticed a garden suite. Did, did they show you actually any garden suites?
No, I went to the new development they showed. I went to the first-time development and I saw some of the rentals in a, in a, in the whole program. I didn't see any suites that had been sponsored or supported through, into existing buildings, all those garden suites or garage suites.
Yeah, because I know we have coach houses, they might think garden suite.
But they're very committed to green, buildings being green and to densification.
Great information, thank you. Anything further? So we're going to, our next item was to recess to close, but we have the media here and I'm thinking if we could recess now to the policy meeting, do that and then, sorry Brendan?
We do have lunch that's just arrived as well.
Okay, so we can?
I think you should try to get through this policy matter before you break for lunch and then you can do your close.
And then do the close and then we're finished. And then the media don't have to stay with us.
For the free lunch, yeah.
So I'm going to have my lunch, does I have a contract?
Yes, you have a contract.
So we'll then recess to our policy meeting and?
That's your policy Shelley.
That's my policy.
Okay.
Charlie and Shelley both had a conflict by sitting on the board of the Society for Community Living and so we had deferred this from our last meeting of two weeks ago to bring it forward to today. And unfortunately Shelley's ill today, but councillor MacFadden wasn't able to join us and I thought it would be better if we had at least four of the members of council here for this meeting. So that's the reason we're back at it here today. So we'll call the meeting to order and we're going to review the minutes of the policy meeting of June fifteenth for adoption. Councillor MacFadden, sorry. Yeah, we'll have councillor Rogers move, seconded by councillor Schuman. Any errors or omissions? All in favor? Opposed? Carry it. And now we're going to review the report number one-one-one-six for review. So Shelley, can I turn it over to you for, I just got to get it up here?
And normally you'd want somebody to move the recommendation before you?
Thank you.
Counselor Rogers?
Move that report number fifteen dash one-one-six from the director of corp, of corporate administration regarding June twenty-ninth policy review be received. Further, that the permissive tax exemption policy and the application form attached to this report be approved. Further, that staff be directed to proceed with the proposed public consultation plan that will provide all affected property owners an opportunity to address council on September the twenty-eighth, two thousand and thirteen.
Thank you. Moved, seconded. Councillor Schuman, discussion. So now we'll, councillor Jevetkov first?
So this is just approval to go into a public consultation process.
So your worship, you'd actually be approving the policy and the application. What we're suggesting is folks would have to apply under the new application form, which we would notify them. We would also notify them the likely effect of the change on them and give them an opportunity to come and explain to you why or why not, that would work for them. But the policy would be in place on this vote. If you got enough pushback, then you would, it's time so that you would have time to make any changes before your need to actually adopt a permissive tax exemption bylaw for two thousand and sixteen. We would expect you'll get vibrant pushback because first off, as you can see, we think you should target around one percent, one and a half percent of your levy as how, what you put out in permissive tax exemptions. But we're not suggesting you adopt that yet because we think the application process and the criteria that are in the policy will have a similar effect to the application policy and criteria around grants, which is to say many people will go through this process and find that they are non-qualifying. Especially for the key cornerstone of the recommendation is the part of their parcel that is either zone, sorry, assessed at commercial or at residential not be exempted. So, but everybody's different. So your ways of raising the funds that you're now getting exempted, and as you see by the chart, we're not where Fort St. John is, St. Evans, but we are at a very high level for permissive tax exemption. If you are the Dawson Creek Society for Community Living, Charlie and Shelley, you're not in a position to raise those funds from your renters because you are taking a set housing allowance that the province is providing and using it to fund your operations. And so I'm sure they'll be coming to you and saying exactly where are we to get this money? We cannot raise our rents. You know, it's bake sales and, and other fundraising would be their choice. Different situation than, say, the golf course. The golf course can. It's up to their board of directors what the membership fees are. There's no provincial agency involved, there's no caps. So in that range between the golf course where frankly, we're getting a steal of a deal and if you raise dollar fees by fifty bucks to pay the city taxes, you'd be fine. To Society for Community Living where literally it might be a deal breaker for them. And they'll be covered because they're residential rather than nonprofit. So we think you need to listen to each one of them and the outcome of that may be some changes to the policy is what we're saying. You might develop policy around, you might be convinced by some of these folks.
Councillor Rogers?
I just need a little help here for a second. What attachment was it that listed all of the, all of the places that were?
We, we don't actually, so we have the, this year's bylaw. So if you look at it, it lists all the permissives.
I remember seeing it.
It also lists the stats.
Does it, or just the permissives?
Yeah, no, they're broken down, public worship properties, permissive and general So if you look at the, you know, big numbers, the golf course, forty-five thousand dollars. Now keeping in mind, a tax exemption, there's no money fairy in the basement. When you give one person the tax exemption, it means everybody else has to pick up that amount of money in order for you to do your business, right? So it's a tracks, tax, tax transfer. When you give an exemption, you're really just transferring that burden to the remaining taxpayers. So as a golf course member, I just have a lot of trouble with the fact that I'm participating in having what should be my burden transferred to my neighbor, the widow on the fixed income. I just, I really have a problem with that. But I have a lot less problem with Society for Community Living who are housing a bunch of folk exactly in the ways we're talking about here, where they're, they're trying to make two things that don't fit, the market value of housing and the ability these folks have to pay, they're closing that gap. If we can participate in some way as a corporation through permissive tax exemption, you know, that delays the day when we get into something like twenty thousand dollar grants. So I think each is different, is what I'm saying.
And for the future of how we guide, what we do and how we do it, I think it's a good conversation for us to understand and have developed and as we engage with the community groups that are affected by it to understand those implications and impacts and help us set the policy that hopefully works for the communities. Thank you for that. So is that clear? So we, we set this policy in place, it caps it, it starts to impose some changes and then we start to engage with the community groups by September to then decide if there's going to be some amendments to the bylaw and or not, so that we have the process in place to set for the budget for two thousand and fifteen. Shelley?
Yeah, your worship, I just want to add the timeline here. So the permissive exemption bylaw has to be approved by council by October thirty-first. So your first three readings has to be in the meeting before that. So everything should be finalized by September thirtieth, if you're going to change it or not change it. So it's kind of a short window. So if we can send everything out right away, it'll give the groups affected the opportunity to actually, you know, look at the draft policy, fill in the application, phone staff, ask questions, and then that two- And then that two-month period and plus you have vacations in between, that kind of thing. So everybody should be able to, um, you know, work in the September month to either, you know, change council's mind or confirm council's decision or what have you.
Thank you. Councillor Jevakov?
I've got no problem moving ahead into a process where it's, uh, public consultation. You know, I mean, there's a lot of aspects to this and one of the key words to me is community. You know, do we want a community without a golf course? Those are considerations. But I guess I'm just wondering, a lot of the reference here is to, uh, assessment classes. Do all of these organizations have assessment notices so that we could look at, uh, the classes?
Uh, through your worship, I believe so. Um, the reason the classes are, are identified is because BC Assessment changed uh the classifications a few years ago. And it affected how we exempt and what we exempt and, and it also provided us an opportunity to look at consistency. So if somebody owns a class six assessment, private, small business owner, they have to pay taxes. But then there's some of these not-for-profit, um, organizations that are also considered class six, but they're not paying taxes. An example is the Internet Society. Because they're not-for-profit, they don't pay taxes. Now, how is that any different really? Because of the structure of their organization, it's affecting whether they pay taxes or not. I'm not sure that, that would hold water. If you had the two people in front of you at the same time. So that's what we're looking at now.
Yeah, well, those are legitimate concerns. I'm just wondering if there's assessment notices or an assessment notice for all of these organizations that I can go and look at and say, okay, what's classed as, uh, class eight and what's classed as class six?
Absolutely, yes. We have, we have, um, through your worship, um, the authenticated role.
Okay.
Downstairs, so.
We can pull that information for all the permissives and get it out to council.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Rogers?
When, so if this all goes forward and we can say to people like the golf course, you're, you're going to have to start paying taxes. Because I do agree with, I, I, I agreed with Mr. Schute when he said, you know, those people that are out at the golf course, um, for the amount of users, I think there's over a thousand users. Still for 25 bucks more, there's their taxes for their, for their facility. The amount of people that are actually using it, who are they? Are you, you see the poor people out there? Not too many. I know they have programs out there where they're actually helping kids out that can't afford to go golfing. Um, it just seems that we, we as, um, the city seem to spend an awful lot of money on recreation and cultural services, more than we do policing. And it's growing. It's growing with the, uh, more money that we're going to be putting into the curling and the, um, and the hobby areas. You know, we were eight million last year. This year, I can estimate that we'll be $10 million on recreation and cultural service. Like if you start including the buildings. So, you know, we've got to start drawing a line somewhere. When you get your property assessment notice, there are taxes that get paid to the city of Dawson Creek. Then there are taxes that go to the regional district, that go to the hospitals and the school board and everybody else. So when we're actually looking at this, can we actually just look at and say, okay, Dawson Creek, the city of Dawson Creek will cover those portion, that portion of the taxes will be tax exempt. But you can actually pay for your regional district and the schools and the hospital and everything else. Like say the golf course, you know, the portion that you'd have to pay to the city, we'll waive that, but you're going to have to pay everything else. So there, there's, there's kind of a little bit of a split.
I think it's actually the reverse, isn't it?
What's that?
I think it's the reverse. I think, uh, when we exempt, we exempt from all taxes and when we include, we include for all taxes.
Well, we include it.
Through your worship, I think it follows. Very often if, if a municipality or local government exempts, all the others are exempted as well. Having half and half would be very difficult, I think, um, to put into policy.
And the amounts that are indicated of the 350 is just our amount. So the golf course, if their tax amount was 45 grand, it's 90 grand that they, if we remove tax exempt status from them, we're, we're removing it for ours as well as for their others. So they would then be taxed on both.
And, uh, unfortunately John just went through a relatively similar process. Uh, because they're trying to get, they're, they're exempting, uh, almost the same number of properties as us, but at over two times as much actual money. Uh, they went through this process and they got enough public pushback that they didn't implement in the first year and they have a phase in. I think they're phasing in over five years or something like that. Because people made the case to them that, um, get, coming up with this money was going to be between difficult and impossible. And you may hear the same thing.
This is going, and this is not going to be difficult for any of them to have this conversation, right? It's going to be tough for some groups to-
Yeah, that's what I was getting at. Is there a way we can sort of split it up? Just like, because now you're just ripping a Band-Aid right off.
Well, most people who have done this have ended up with phase ins. Uh, where they have identified what their target is and they have said, we'll get there in three years or we'll get there in five years to give people time and space. But, uh, other people who have started down this road have abandoned it entirely. People get pretty reliant on their permissive tax exemptions.
Thanks. So we'll, sorry, Councillor Jevakov?
So, is there provisions to, to, uh, give a percentage like 50% tax exemption? Or, or is that not approved or allowed in the rules?
Absolutely. Uh, it's council's permissive exemption. The only thing that's statutorily exempted is churches and the footprint around the church.
Yeah, the actual places of worship rather than the parking lots or the parsonages.
Yeah. Everything else is a, a council permissive exemption.
Be good to, I think it's, I think it's a really good opportunity to have some real good, uh, informed conversation about what it is we're doing and shifting that tax burden around and who pays and who isn't and how it is.
So as I understand, Councillor Jevakov's concern is, um, there's two ways of consulting. One is we're doing this to you, Jack, which is what we have in front of you. Another way of doing this is this is what we're considering. Can you tell us how this would affect you? And maybe we could schedule meetings earlier than September 28th if we're going that way. And normally there's a 30-day window for, um, people to comment on policy. But I doubt if any of them will in 30 days because they won't understand the implication, what it will mean for them.
Yeah.
Uh, so that'd be an alternative if you wished.
Councillor Jevakov and then Shelley?
Yeah, my preference is this is what we're considering. We want your feedback. I, my sense is with other, uh, public consultations is when you go in there and say, this is what we're doing, we want to hear what you're going to say. A lot of times the public says, well, you know, they're going to do it anyways. There's no point in me, uh, you know, going and talking. It's, they're already doing it. They said they're doing it. So the consultation process, I think, is, uh, is important to, you know, the way it's, uh, delivered. The, the other point is, I was just going to make a point there. Some of these, um, sports activities for sure are all volunteer operated. And, you know, you layer on more costs and it takes more volunteerism, I guess. And there is a trade-off, I mean, as far as, uh, cost to the users. And it's the same thing with costs to the arena users or the pool users, you know, that we deal with. But, um, I, I think it would be, it's a valuable exercise to go through. But I think the way we do it, um, I would prefer that we, you know, we're considering it. And, uh, if we do it, you know, it'll be implemented for next year and watch the feedback.
Shelley?
Yeah, through your worship, um, that's pretty much the way that, um, we had it envisioned is that it was not a 30-day review of the policy. It was this is a draft policy and a draft application. Can you please fill it out? Provide comments, feedback and give them the opportunity to come before council.
Right, I mean, so a likely outcome of that is any change you desire to make probably won't happen for that 2016 tax exemption bylaw because of the timelines, uh, Shelley's talking about. If, if you've got nothing but pats on the back, yeah, okay. But I'm actually not believing you'll get nothing but pats on the back. But it's a great process to go through because there's no point pretending you can make movement on the fiscal gap. If you can't even look the golf course in the eye and say, guess what, you got to pay some tax. Know what I mean? You can't. There's, it, it just, uh, there's no point pretending. You know what I mean?
The, the other thing to Councillor Jevakov's point about if we try, uh, say that we want to engage first before we implement, say we're going to move the first stages of our changes to this. In my, and I, so, and I agree with that. I, I think if, if in an ideal world, if we get people to engage first to get the feedback and then move. But the sense to me of how we've been able to have the lack of success almost in getting people to come and engage at our budget time or different stuff. And unless you, unless you say, here's what we're doing and moving forward with it, we'd have trouble seeming to engage people and getting them to-
This ought to do it, though, eh?
Well, this will get the people engaged. But, you know, I, but I do agree with it. I'd rather have that engagement first if we could find a way to do it.
Shelley?
Yeah, the only other thing I wanted to add was for council to consider what their outcomes are, their desired outcomes of this review are. Because, um, you know, if it's to review the policy to see, um, how this affects the individual organizations, um, plus address the transfer of tax, all those things should be thought of as you're listening to the people coming forward. Because it, it, um, I mean, the environment that we were in when, when, when this started was, uh, we were unsure about, um, you know, uh, this, uh, fair share assessments were rising. Um, all those things were out there. The uncertainty was there. So, um, keep that into con, as, as we're going through this, is that-
To me, the, the aspect of the, uh, I'll use the term scope creep, creep into how much money we're, uh, diverting away from onto other taxpayers as a result of the permissive tax exemption. And you look at, oh, 13 to 2015, there's an additional $50,000 of tax dollars that have been, um, assigned to, the burden to the taxpayers by our policy. So I think that's creep in the amount of money that we're, um, having each year reassigned to the taxpayers from our policy. But also understanding from the prioritization process, if we are going to have a policy, are we, are we exempting the people and the organizations and the groups that we want to for the future of the community? I think that's a great conversation.
One of the things you talked about earlier, which is the real outcome of this one way or another, no matter what you decide to do. These folks are actually not aware of what the taxpayers are doing for them. Uh, because it's a tax exemption, it's almost invisible. Uh, so I would bet if you asked every golf course member, surveyed all thousand, not one of them would begin to estimate that they're getting this much, uh, tax relief as money. Like they, they're not, they wouldn't realize that they are actually transferring that burden.
I hesitate to say this, but also is it going to the residents of the city of Dawson Creek? And, you know, your motocross association, your golfers are, if that was all 100% people within the city of Dawson Creek, you say, well, that's supporting the activities. But are there then some additional support going to people that aren't even residents in our community? To that, and I don't know the question to it and I don't know whether that's legitimate or not, but go ahead.
That applies to the arena.
Absolutely.
In a big way. You've got 300 skaters or 400 skaters out of a population of 12,000. Like that's not a significant majority by any means. So, and, and the costs, you know, a thousand dollars per person per year. You know, I mean, that's, if that's the standard that we're working with, this $300,000 is not very much.
You know, like I said, to me, it's just a great opportunity to have some conversation about understanding how and what our policies do to guide, who's paying for what. Further discussion on the motion? So now we're clear. We're moving forward with the policy.
We're moving forward with the draft.
And then we're going to engage, um, with a tight timeline in September to either decide we're going to move, move it forward for the 2016 budget year or, and/or as a result of the public input we will get. Then to make some modifications and changes, which will be great information. Question? Ready for the question? All in favor? Both? Carry. Thank you. Uh, anything further under our policy meeting?
No, I think so.
That it?
I believe you can recess to close.
Motion to adjourn? Moved, seconded, all in favor?
To recess to close.
Recess to close, sorry. Yeah, I made a mistake there because we did go to-
I'm sure Tyrell was skipping the race.
So we're going to eat and then do close or do you want to?